Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is July eighth and the time is one twelve P M. This is the second session for the Policy Committee on Health, Safety, and Wellbeing. We're at the Hawaii County Building. Please turn off all your cellphones into silent mode. Yes? Okay, okay. And so we have Ms. Kimball to my left, Ms. Kalimba, Mr. Kani Alii Kleinfelder, and to my, oh, Ms. Vegas, Mr. Houston's back there, and Ms. Kagiwata to my right. Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, can you read in resolution, oh, I'm sorry, testifiers?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just noting that we do have a number of testifiers here in the Hilo Chamber as well as Zoom. We have been informed that we may have one testifier in our Waimea site, so at this time, if I could check in with Kendra. Kendra, do we have one testifier, and if we do, if you could lead us out with him? Hearing none, I'll check back later. So what we'll do is we'll start with our two Hilo testifiers here in, uh, two testifiers here in the Hilo Chamber. Then we'll rotate between two testifiers in the chamber, two testifiers via Zoom, and continue that till we're completed. So first up, we have Barbara Siganero testifying on Bill fifty-one, to be followed by Jeffrey Powers. Barbara, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. You can hit that green button at the base of the mic to turn it on.
Aloha. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you on this matter. My name is Barbara Siganero, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Action for Animals Hawaii, which is a nonprofit organization that has a primary mission to foster for adoption dogs and cats, to educate the public, and to reduce pet overpopulation on Hawaii Island. In two thousand and twenty-four, Action for Animals fostered and placed in adoption, into adoption, six hundred and forty-four cats and a hundred and sixty-seven dogs. Of those numbers, forty percent of the cats were from animal control. Ninety percent of the dogs were from animal control. So we think we are a good partner with the county. But we also rescue cats that have been abandoned at county facilities, such as transfer stations, water stations, and other locations where colonies have been established because of abandonment of pets. I am here today to oppose Bill fifty-one for three primary reasons. First, policies and regulations that use starvation as a means to control animal population are inhumane and cruel. Second, it will do nothing to stem the flow of abandoned cats. People will continue to abandon cats for reasons such as they have to move and they can't find a place that will rent with pets, or they have to leave the island, or somebody's gotten very sick and they can't afford to take care of the cat any longer. So when time, you know, when they get to the point where they have to face the reality of their personal situation, the owners who try to surrender their animals will find that animal control, the humane society, and private sanctuaries are already over capacity on this island. So when time runs out for the owners, they feel they have no other choice but to release the animals in a park or public facility where existing colonies are established. Third, Bill fifty-one will severely hamper the rescue of cats that we are able to trap and foster for adoption from county facilities. When cats are fed in colony environments, they develop trust with those that feed them. This greatly improves the prospect of trapping kittens and cats so that they may be fostered for adoption. There is a cadre of volunteers in all parts of this
Thirty seconds, please.
There's a cadre of volunteers in all parts of this island that feed and care for abandoned animals using their private resources. In my opinion, these people are heroes, and I find it disappointing that the county would consider attacking these community volunteers rather than focusing on the abandonment issue, which is the core of overpopulation problems. If the county wishes to address the overpopulation of animals, let's fund spay and neuter efforts. Let's model a world-class T N R program.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier here in the Hilo Chambers is Jeffrey Powers, to be followed by our testifier in Ocean View. That was my fault. I meant to say Ocean View instead of Waimea. But Jeffrey, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Jeffrey Powers. I'm here representing the animals that can't represent themselves. Okay. Uh, good evening, members of the council. I'm here tonight to speak for the animals who cannot speak for themselves, understanding concerns about unsightly community. However, it makes illegal to feed stray cats will not solve these problems. It will make them worse. A starving cat is more desperate and hungry. Research show that well-fed cats are less likely to prey on birds and other wildlife. When you cut off their food source, you force them to hunt more, less, uh, to survive, directly undermining the goal of protecting our native species. Furthermore, feeding cat ban is not solution to the cat population. It's a cruel and ineffective policy. The cats will not simply disappear. They will scatter, dissipate for food, overturning garbage cans, and becoming more visible nuisance. This will only increase the eyesore you're trying to prevent. The most effective and humane approach is the Community Spur, Trap, Neuter, and Return Program. This method stabilizes the cat population. Yeah, instead of punitive ban that will lead to more suffering and increased problems, I urge you to support the proactive compassionate strategy that benefits all members of the community, both human and animals. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, if we could now transition to Ocean View.
Excuse me, before we move on, Jacob, just the record, Ms. Kirkowitz is joining us. Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Chair. And at this time, if we could have Marilyn, if you could introduce your testifier out there at Ocean View, and then we'll come back to Zoom with Gina Borgman. Thank you, Marilyn.
Aloha, Council. Today in Ocean View, we have Brenda Robertson to testify for you, speaking on Bill fifty-one.
Hello, how are you? First thing, I thank you for letting me speak out on a problem that has been a problem for a long time. I've been here twenty-three years. I never knew there was such a problem with cats and dogs. I've rescued many, many of them. And the first thing I want to tell you, it's not a cat problem, it is a human problem. It's the humans that are dropping off these cats. Cause I've rescued many, many, many at Whittington Beach. I go back and they're back there again. So anyway, you know, I oppose this bill. I don't think it's even in the right mind how you can even come up with something like this. It's just outrageous. And I, I'm really concerned, so just to let you know, I take care of a lot of animals, and I just can't believe that when I read this, it was just terrible. So, uh, let's all work together and let's not make it a cat problem. It is a human problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is via Zoom, Gina Borgman, to be followed by Corey Harden. Gina, when you begin, you'll have three minutes. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for this meeting. I feel that it's very important that we address this issue. I am here to state my preference for passage of Bill fifty-one, which, as you know, prohibits feeding feral animals on county property. And this will protect Hawaii's endangered wildlife and restore balance to our fragile ecosystems. As someone who's witnessed the devastating impacts of feral cats firsthand, I urge you to pass this critical measure. I live here in Keokah. I frequent the county parks almost every day, and I'm really dismayed that there's a preference giving, given to the health and well-being of feral cats over our state bird, the neinai, which is, by the way, the most endangered goose on this planet. And, uh, let me remind everyone that Hawaii is top of the list worldwide for endangered and nearly extinct animals. It's a very, very unique ecosystem, and I think at this point requires rather drastic measures to keep the native wildlife and ecosystem safe. The native species here, in fact, I believe are under siege. Speaking from my personal experience, I've seen piles of cat food left in parks like Waileua River State Park, Lili'okalani Gardens, and Richardson Ocean Park, often attracting neinai and other wild, excuse me, waterfowl instead of cats. These stations become deadly traps by exposing endangered birds to toxoplasmosis and other diseases. As we all know, just this year, a neinai gosling died from toxoplasmosis after eating contaminated cat food in Lili'okalani Gardens. This, I find astounding, given that this infection is very easy to mitigate. Feeding feral cats
Thirty seconds, please, thirty seconds.
Thank you, thank you. I've watched parks and road sides littered with uneaten food and feces, creating unsanitary conditions. Hawaii is moving closer to the sad reality of resembling a mainland city instead of the rare jewel that it is. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is Corey Harden, to be followed by Phil Eagle here in the Hilo Chamber. Corey, when you begin, you'll have three minutes. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
Um, yes, good afternoon, council members, Corey Harden. Um, I'm going to suggest amending Bill fifty-one. I sent some written testimony focusing on cats, um, at that time supporting trap neuter release instead of Bill fifty-one. But taking a second look, I see this only works in locations where there are people who consistently feed and take care of traps and take cats to be neutered, and of course, someone has to pay for neutering. And someone pointed out to me that people are also feeding wild pigs. I've seen this happen near a busy street. They're feeding chickens, they're feeding bread to ducks, not realizing it causes health problems. And as far as cats, unfortunately, they kill wildlife, and cats have an instinct to hunt even if they're well-fed by humans. And of course, they carry toxoplasmosis that can infect other animals and infect humans. Women infected before or during pregnancy can pass the infection on to their babies, leading to severe health issues. And toxoplasmosis remains in the body and can be reactivated for the rest of one's life. Some programs trap cats and then adopt out those that are adoptable. But many feral cats have health or behavior issues that make them unadoptable, and they would have difficult lives in the wild with disease and injury, and so, um, they are euthanized. But it's difficult for many people to support this. For this bill, perhaps the best approach is to support it, but provide exceptions for trap neuter release programs that are approved by the county. It would be helpful also to have publicity, that there's a new law on the books, community education about the impacts of feeding animals, and a phase-in period with warnings given before fines are imposed. It's difficult to make a good call on this with knowledgeable and caring people supporting conflicting solutions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, our next two testifiers in the Hilo Chamber are William Brown, to be followed by Kristen Greenland. William, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes on Bill fifty-one.
Hello, my name is William Brown. I'm here to testify against Bill fifty-one. And the reason I'm here is I think it's important that you hear from the perspective of someone who feeds cats. And I not only feed cats, but I actively trap, neuter, release, and manage a colony. I do this out at the Hilo Transfer Station, and I can tell you that it's important to feed cats if you're going to do trapping and neutering because you bring the cats together in an area at a certain time of the day, and then you can have an effective trapping program. If you don't feed cats, uh, you're going to have a colony that's having more kittens. You're going to have a colony of unhealthy animals who can carry more disease. And so it's important, the feeding is an important part of managing a cat colony. I've been working out at the Hilo Transfer Station for almost two years now, and I can tell you that the colonies out there are pretty much under control. Most of the cats in that area were not born there. It's because there are people who continue to bring in and abandon cats on a regular basis. And I try, if they are social, to find good homes for them. I've been able to find homes for about twelve kittens who've been abandoned out there. That's how I started with this. And so really, the problem starts not with the cat colony, but with the fact that we are not enforcing abandonment laws. It's a problem because people who have kittens or people who have cats have no place to take them, and so they dump them. It, it's a problem because people who want to spay and neuter their animals either cannot afford it or they can't find a place. And I know you see Pet Fix and other organizations doing this all the time, but my personal experience was the first time I tried to fix an animal, it was a four-month waiting list.
Thirty seconds, please.
Okay, so really, what you need to do is work on these problems upstream, not wait until the point where the animals abandon and, and causing problems. And I invite you to come out to the Hilo Station, if you haven't, and take a look around there because what you have is a very small colony of healthy animals. And personally, I don't see much evidence of these animals attacking birds there. They're well-fed, they're well-cared for, they're
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier here in Hilo is Kristen Greenland, to be followed by a testifier in Kona. And then we'll go to Zoom for Greg Baker. But at this time, Kristen, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes for Bill fifty-one.
Aloha. Thank you for listening today. Um, I'm Kristen Greenland. I'm the president of Jungle Cat Ladies Sanctuary in Volcano. Most of the cats on county property are abandoned pets. They're not wild or feral. The main reason for abandonment is the lack of adequate animal control services. While I know the county is making efforts with these services, it's unrealistic to expect people not to feed abandoned cats. There's currently no enforcement of anti-abandonment laws, and Bill fifty-one is in conflict with our animal cruelty laws. The county needs to enforce its current animal abandoned laws before making any new ones. I believe a cat starvation bill will never gain support from the majority of your constituents. The cat community is vocal, and we advocate for these animals. Trap-neuter return works. There's plenty of scientific evidence to back it up. It just takes time and dedication. If T N R had been started and supported by the county decades ago, we wouldn't be in this situation. We need a multifaceted approach that includes county support for T N R M programs, funding for spay-neuter services, and financial support for sanctuaries. Many abandoned cats could be rehomed, and even some of the unsocialized ones can be cared for by local sanctuaries. To those who argue that the cat advocates should take the cats home with them, in addition to the many cats that we already have, our nonprofit organization has removed and rehomed twelve cats and kittens from the Banyan Drive and Lili'okalani Park area in the last few months. I'd like to take in more, but I don't have the space in my enclosed cat yard or the money to build more and feed more. And yes, all the cats are enclosed, so they don't harm birds. Nonprofits need support from Hawaii County for their own efforts and for T N R programs. We need the county to share in this responsibility. For years, private nonprofits have been addressing the cat overpopulation problem, doing the work that the county should have been doing for decades. Every cat we fix prevents thousands more from being born. Seven years ago, I moved into a house in Volcano, and there are already twenty unfixed cats living there. I got to work getting them fixed. It took me almost a year. Thanks to Hui Pono, Holo Hono, we got them all fixed, and we have not had any more kittens in six years. It does work. It just takes time.
Thirty seconds, please.
There are groups currently working together with D L N R and the Parks Department to address cat overpopulation through T N R M. I oppose Bill fifty-one. At the very least, please amend the bill so county-approved caretakers under recognized programs are not in violation of the law. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, at this time, if we could go to Kona for their testifier before coming back to Zoom with Greg Baker. Scott, if you could, please.
Thank you, Riley. Today we have Craig Moody in opposition of Bill fifty-one. Craig, go ahead and state your name for the record and proceed. You'll have three minutes.
My name's Craig Moody. Thank you, council members, for your time and your service today. My name's Craig Moody. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to Bill fifty-one. This proposed legislation, particularly the heavy fines aimed at those feeding and providing humane care for free-roaming cats, will not solve the problem. In fact, it will make it worse. I urge you to consider two critical points. One, this bill will push people into hiding, creating dangerous conditions. The individuals currently feeding and caring for these animals do so out of compassion and at their own expense. Many are participants in humane, structured, trap-neuter and return programs, efforts that are globally recognized as the most effective long-term approach to managing community cat problems, populations. By criminalizing these efforts, you're driving them underground. Feeders will not stop. They will simply shift their activities to early morning or late night hours, alone, in the dark, and without oversight or safety. That increases the danger not only just to the cats, but to the people. You will not be stopping the feeding. You will be making it more secretive, riskier, and harder to monitor. Point two, this law punishes compassion more severely than cruelty. The bond between caregiver and cat is real. For ninety-nine percent of the people involved in T N R and feeding, simply stopping is not an option. It will be, it would feel like abandonment. These animals recognize and rely on those who care for them. They are part of a living, breathing, interdependent community. Caretakers can recognize every cat and understand when something is wrong with one and have it treated appropriately. What is truly outrageous is the fact that the bill proposes steep penalties for human feeders while offering little or no accountability for those who abuse, torture, or abandon animals. I can tell you firsthand of, of a cat that was deliberately or fiably tortured to death, and nothing, nothing was done to the person responsible. Yet, under Bill fifty-one, someone offering food, water, to the same cat would face harsh fines. This is not just unjust, it's morally backwards.
There is that.
By working with various county agencies, various organizations can help curb cat populations. As mentioned by one of the previous testimonies, if this had been undertaken years ago, cat populations and certain land and animal endangerments would not be a problem. Bill fifty-one does not reflect the values of aloha stewardship and compassion that our island communities are built upon. This is a better path, one rooted in science, community involvement, and humane practices. Please reject this bill and support proven data T N R programs instead. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you, Craig. That's it for Kona.
Thank you so much, Scott. Chair, our next testifier via Zoom is Greg Baker, to be followed by Mar Mizunaka. Greg, when you begin, you'll have three minutes. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
Okay. Well, aloha, chairperson and council members. Please accept my mahalo nui loa for all your kokua and support of each, each of you so generously share as council members. My name is Greg Puuva Aloha Baker. I strongly oppose Bill fifty-one. I live in Kalapana City subdivision near Pohoa. I've lived here in Hawaii Navy for over twenty-three years. My ohana is Puna ike onona Kelly Uho Omalu and Uncle Robert Kelly Uho Omalu ohana. I have a bachelor's in accounting and MBA in business, and recently completed the University of Pacific's Cat Management Certificate Program. I have over five years of in-depth experience managing cats. It includes trap-neuter return for over sixty cats, managing the Pohoa Town Colonies plus a lower colony for over a hundred cats. I created a mini-cat sanctuary in my home that is fully enclosed with rescued cats. I would like to share an important story for me regarding cats, which is why I am here today. Sorry, it's always. Pardon me? I allowed myself to start caring for all the cats in our community one day while I was in Hilo waiting at a stoplight at Kanoi Le Hua. I noticed something moving in the middle of the road, and I realized it was a kitten. And I was like, that, you know, didn't know what to do. And nobody reached out who was right there could have helped the kitten. So I started getting out of my car. I went off all this. Sorry. And a bus came up and, and actually ran the kitten over. Of course, I was stunned. So drove down, got the cat, brought it home, gave it a nice little burial. If we cannot feed and care for the cats on county land, most of which are lost pet cats, our very own ohana members, get them fixed, stop having kittens, as this bill will actually cause, then more kittens will be killed, just like what I experienced. Please know I care about both the environment and the animals in our community, and I believe we can protect both if we all support structured, humane, and scientifically verified solutions. Specifically, the one that Aloha Animal, Aloha Animal Alliance has been, is put forward. For the first time ever, Hawaii
Thirty seconds, please, thirty seconds.
... a comprehensive state-of-the-art cat management program. With the support of this council, I urge you to support it. I have to share, there are no easy answers, no easy solutions. I believe we all want to stabilize and reduce the cat population to zero. So thank you, thank you, and, uh, thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, your next testifier is Mar Mizunaka, to be followed by Marilyn Rose here in the Hilo Chamber. Mar, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Aloha, I'm Mar Mizunaka. I am in strong support of Bill fifty-one, and I believe it is needed to steward our lands and ecosystem. And I don't think it is a cat issue, but it's an issue of non-native animals across the board. Our island is overcrowded, not only by people, but by chickens, pigs, and cats, and other non-native species that have no place, natural place in our ecosystem. It isn't a cat issue. It's not about herding cats or displacing cats. It's a human issue, but the problem is that people are feeding and abandoning animals and disrupting the natural order of animals, keeping their own populations in check through the process of natural order. Through this, we are empowering non-native predators that have no natural predator in our islands to take over, not just cats, but again, pigs or chickens and goats as well. This isn't denying these cats, but about giving native species a bigger chance to survive and thrive in what is their natural and their only home. I don't think this bill is about punishing compassion, but it's about making sure that everyone's good intentions don't lead to the death of preventable deaths of endangered species. And there may be side effects that we can't see of stopping these, stopping the feeding of these feral animals, but I do believe that in taking a small step towards the good of native birds, plants, and our native ecosystem, it will allow our aina to do its natural work towards abundance of its own kind. With a provision to include certified cat caretakers, I support this bill and I support our native ecosystem. Mahalapiya.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next two testifiers here in Hilo are Marilyn are Marilyn Rose, to be followed by Donna Chalmers. Marilyn, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Oh, you'll have to turn the mic on, hit the green. There you go.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Rose. I'm from Kaua. I oppose this bill. And part of the bill says that these animals are living in a wild or unconfined state. They are there mostly, in my opinion, because they are being dumped by citizens. I believe these citizens are uneducated. They don't know what to do, and somehow they come up with this. I just think it's really cruel. And we could put money towards educating people about the life cycle of a cat, that a kitten can get pregnant at four months and then have more and more babies. So I know lots of neighbors who don't even understand this. We are spaying and neutering for free by the thousands, but we cannot keep up. We have to do something different. And I think part of that is education. So I know we all want a humane solution, and for me, that's education. Thank you for opposing this bill.
Thank you so much. Chair, our next testifier is Donna Chalmers, to be followed by another testifier in Kona. Donna, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Donna Chalmers, and I have worked at two humane societies, the one on Oahu and the one here. It's been a few years, but I don't believe people... Prohibiting people from feeding cats makes sense to control the cat overpopulation problem. And I actually think it's really pretty inhumane. The process of starvation is brutal, and it starts within 48 hours of denying cats food. From what I've seen with cat rescue organizations, my friends who are cat feeders, they do a great job. They're very responsible, and they're a very important part of getting these animals to trust them, so that they can trap them, get them spayed, get them hopefully adopted by someone else. But there's also things that I have heard, because I worked at humane societies before. People ask me, what do I do with my animals if I can't take care of anymore? There's really not a reliable system, I know of, on this island. I don't see the humane society having the capacity. My friends, the shelter animals, don't have the capacity. So that's a funding issue. We need a place to put these animals where they can be taken care of, adopted out. That will take some money, but it's the obvious step of what I hear from people. And I don't know that people are all that aware about what animals go through when they're abandoned. Life is not easy out there. They think it's easy just to, you know, they'll find food. There's cars, and people that don't like animals. We also need to, let's see... There's, like, island shelters, what do we call it here? Cat sanctuaries. If we had more of those for unadoptable animals. So what I do want to say is I really do believe that our cat feeders and the people who use their money, go every day to take care of these animals, they're heroes. They're not hurting anything. So thank you so much for considering my words.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, at this time, we'll go to Kona before coming back to Zoom for our next testifier, El No. But at this time, Scott, if you could?
Thank you, Reddy. We've got Gregory Wing in opposition of Bill 51. Gregory, go ahead and state your name for the record and proceed. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Wing. I live in Halaualoa, and I'm stating my opposition to Bill 51. There's already been a lot of great testimony about the humanity of feeding cats or not feeding cats and the effect on the cats, as well as on the people. I think what I'd like to say is that actually banning the feeding will make the situation worse. Trap, neuter, return, and manage is a well-proven method for managing the cats. It's mentioned by World Health Organization in their One Health. It's also mentioned by ICAM International. The science really supports that that is the way to have healthy cats that are managed and are given a good life, but also it's good for the community. If you stop the feeding, you stop the vehicle by which we're able to manage the colonies and keep them together and monitor them, and not just feed them, but also get them vaccinated and spayed and neutered and taken care of medically. So if we remove that and the cats scatter, we completely lose that ability, and the problem will become worse, not better. So I definitely hope that we look at this, not just from the compassion, but in our efforts to make the situation better and to get this under control and eventually draw down to having no free-roaming cats. I think this is a step in the wrong direction, and I hope you'll consider that in opposing this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory. That's it for Kona.
Thank you, Scott. Chair, at this time, we'll take our next Zoom testifier, El No, to be followed by Lucritia Worcester. El, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Oh, here you go.
Aloha. My name is El No, and I thank you for allowing me to speak here today about my objection to Bill 51. I am adamantly against passing of this bill in its current form. Any solution to the feral animal population that starts off with an act of cruelty is automatically wrong, in my opinion. It is unacceptable and shortsighted to prioritize one species over another, regardless of their native status. I mean, if we applied that logic to human beings and said, we're only going to feed Hawaiian people in Hawaii County because they're native, it sounds ridiculous, right? So why would you apply it to any other living being? It just doesn't make sense to me. It also seems backwards that you would seek to punish the helpers instead of reforming animal abuse and abandonment laws. I mean, going after people who are actually causing the problem, not the people who are trying to solve it, seems like the answer to me. I understand the importance of ne'ne. I understand the importance of birds to our ecosystem. I also understand that cats and any other animals in the chain are important, or they wouldn't exist, and they wouldn't be here. You use an argument of diseases like toxoplasmosis and things like that as a reasoning for it, but how many have actually been killed by toxoplasmosis versus cars? Are you going to stop people from driving cars? It's not a good argument. I think that, you know, anything that aims to starve a creature is simplistic and inhumane and cruel, and it's not the way to go. You know, we need to find something that works with both species and not at one species' expense. You know, I recently met a man who picks up cans at the county parks every morning before sunrise, and he told me that over the last two years, he has found a dozen cats, either in plastic totes or plastic trash bags, that have been thrown in the trash can. It's not their fault. It's not the cat's fault. It's a human problem, as everyone has said. So why are we aiming to punish a creature who didn't ask for this? And why are we aiming to punish the helpers who are trying to solve this problem instead of going after the people who are causing it? I think that's the bottom line here. I don't think that we can use the argument of prioritizing native species. They're here. We're here. People are here. Animals are here, and we have to find a way for all-
Thirty seconds, please. Thirty seconds.
If we do this, you open it up for more vigilantes and people to commit crimes against these animals. And I don't think that's the direction that we should go. I urge you to amend this bill or change it in its form, in its current form, and not pass it. I appreciate your time. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next testifier is Lucritia Worcester, to be followed by Amanda Kahanui here in the Hilo chamber. Lucritia, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, because I probably ruined your name. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Lucritia Worcester. I work with Action for Animals, which is an animal control partner who actively rescues and rehomes cats and dogs that have been abandoned or surrendered. We also take from the community, because animal control only takes sick and injured or surrendered animals, which leaves community kittens from the transfer stations and the water stations to fend for themselves. We save lives with the support of the county. So Bill 51 undermines that entire mission. Instead of helping, it spreads suffering amongst the animals of our island. The question shouldn't be, should they be fed? But because feeding leads to rescue, which leads to spay-neuter, vaccination, and ultimately reduces the disease and overpopulation on our island. Feeding is not the problem, as so many people here today have said. The real issue is the dumping of animals by individuals who are breaking existing laws. And yet, the county is targeting compassionate feeders rather than enforcing those cruelty laws. Hawaii County, along with DLNR, is working with Aloha Animal Alliance on a county-funded plan that combines responsible feeding with rescue, sterilization, and vaccination. That plan will reduce the cat population, but it needs time to work. Starving the cats disrupts the process of that. If this short-sighted bill must be pushed forward, which I really hope it doesn't, because there are so many people, your constituents, that are in opposition, and it criminalizes typically older women for acts of compassion, in the very least, it should include a provision that says approved caretakers under county-recognized programs will not be in violation of this law. We have a plan. Let us prove that it can work before criminalizing and finding good people for trying to solve the problem that the county has been unwilling to face. I am completely in opposition of this law, and I hope that you are too.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is Amanda Kahanui, to be followed by Sylvia Dolena. Amanda, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
This one? There we go.
There you go.
Aloha, kako. My name is Amanda Kahanui, and I live in Aina Loa in the Puna district. And I strongly oppose Bill 51 that criminalizes feeding community cats on county property. Organizations and community partners that have been caring for abandoned cats and feral cats at places like the Ka'ao transfer station, and I'm grateful for them to do so. This helps to monitor the population. They trap and fix a lot of these kitties so they don't continue to contribute to the population, and they watch for health concerns that could affect the feral population as well as our domestic cats. Instead of criminalizing organizations and caring community citizens, we need to support them. Offer county spay-neuter programs. Create a map where the kitties are and what current numbers are at each location. Your community partners can provide the manpower to track these colonies. Provide small grants to help feed them, vaccinate them, spay-neuter, and monitor them. Starving them is not the answer. It's cruel. It's cruel to starve them. Having colonies of sick kitties is not the answer. It's dangerous. If they don't have access to food and clean water at these transfer stations, they will seek it elsewhere, going into private properties where they could injure or infect our domestic populations and our wildlife. They stay at these places because there is food and water and someone to care for them. If we don't keep them in these places, they will move out, and they will affect our native populations, like the ne'ne and other birds. We need to work together. At the very least, our community rescues and volunteers need to be exempt from any feeding laws. We also need greater enforcement of anti-abandonment laws. I recently rescued three kittens left in the mud to die by a river in Honomo. I was driving by, look at the beautiful river, got out to take a picture, and there they were, squirming. One week old, their eyes were closed in a broken box next to the road. They were obviously abandoned by a human. Where are the laws to protect these animals from people? You are representatives of us. You are our county council. We are representatives of the people. We are here, and we ask you to listen to our testimonies, and look how many people came today to oppose this bill.
Thirty seconds, please.
We need your kokua. We need your support, and we need your community collaboration to work together to save these animals and to save our aina. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. Our next testifier here in Hilo is Sylvia Dolena, to be followed by Susan Tita via Zoom. Sylvia, when you begin?
Mr. Perry, can you make a note that Chairman Ina will join us?
Thank you, Chair. Sylvia, when you begin, you'll have three minutes. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
There? Yeah. Okay, good. All right. May I start? Aloha. I'm Sylvia Dolena. I'm very happy to be here again, kinda. Regarding Bill 51, although it states anyone feeding any animal, it obviously primarily refers to community cats. I would like to make three points. There's an elephant in the room. Someone alluded to it a couple of times, but here it is. This bill is based upon a false narrative perpetuated by DLNR that cats are the cause, main cause, of native bird extinction. This is the extinction capital of the world. The number one and two causes of native bird extinction, including the ne'ne and the monk seals, are human-caused. But nobody addresses that. The number one cause of death of native birds is the disease-carrying mosquito. The number two cause of death is loss of habitat due to overdevelopment and pollution. And the number three cause of ground nesting birds are mongooses, and tree nesting birds are the tree rats. Yes, cats are included in number four predators, but those are feral cats, not the abandoned, lost stray cats that live in our areas. For the ne'ne, the number one cause is vehicular injury. And mahalo to the council for reducing the speed limit in areas where the ne'ne's cross. Thank you. That's proactive. And also, I read something that more and more ne'ne are being killed by golf balls because they cross the golf course. Isn't that ridiculous? Number two for ne'ne is starvation due to loss of habitat, due to overdevelopment, including pollution, chemicals in parks, and other habitat obstacles. And some of the predators for the ne'ne are dogs. Toxoplasmosis is on the list, but not on the top three. Monk seals. Let's address monk seals. The number one starvation due to... The number one cause of death for monk seals is starvation due to competition with commercial fisheries. And then number two is entanglement in fishnets. And number three, was a surprise to me, aggressive monk seal males kill the juveniles, especially when their food source is scarce. Caused by humans again. Then, of course, number four is toxoplasmosis and other diseases. If we really want-
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you. If we really want to save the native species, shouldn't we focus on the number one, two, and three causes? And I'd like to leave you with this quote and a mahalo. And this quote is from Einstein. I'm paraphrasing it. "Most people try to solve a problem by focusing on the symptoms, not the root cause. Intelligent people solve the right problem, and geniuses prevent the problem." And I thank you for your proactive support.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're gonna have to move on. Chair, our next testifier is via Zoom, Susan Tita. Susan, if you are in the Zoom still, if you could please unmute your mic and introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Again, calling out to Susan Tita.
Yes. My name is Susan Tita. I am here opposing Bill 51, which is now on the agenda. I am opposed to Bill 51 being passed. It is wrong and would be a death sentence to the feral cat population that so many caregivers look after. It would make criminals out of people that are doing service to our community by caring for, feeding, and sterilizing the cat population. Councilman Kleinfeldr has chosen to punish good citizens and render suffering to animals that are underserving of this treatment, undeserving of this treatment, excuse me. With all of the problems facing our community, crime, gridlock, traffic, poorly maintained roads and parks, this, Kleinfeldr, is the bill you chose as your primary target for our community. This Bill 51 not only shows the ignorance of the individual who introduced it, but the lack of empathy- but the lack of empathy for the people who have selfishly given of their time to help maintain and control a population of unwanted animals and for the defenseless animals themselves. Shame on you, councilpeople. Shame on you, Con- Kleinfelder. This Bill 51 shows your true character. You would have been better served to pass a bill that helps our animal population, encourages humane treatment of animals, and does not demonize some of your constituents. Ending, this bill, if passed, is morally wrong.
Thank you so much. Our next testifier via Zoom is Carol Marr, to be followed by Sharon Caldwell here in the Hilo chamber. Carol, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Oh, it might be muted. There you go.
All right, there we go. Aloha, everyone. Um, I'm Dr. Carol Marr. I'm actually a board-certified family medicine physician. I was born and raised in Hilo, um, graduate from medical schools. Also went to, um, the John A. Burns School of Medicine on Oahu. Uh, but my heart is always in Hilo, along with the rest of my family, so it's really important to me. But today, I'm speaking in strong support of Bill 51. As a physician, I'm really concerned about the health risk presented by having just feral animals in our community and county parks. Um, they are known to spread diseases that are highly transmissible to humans, to us and our own health, um, especially toxoplasmosis, which we know is very commonly transmitted by feral cats, and they're, and it stays in their feces. Um, while toxo really causes maybe just mild symptoms for adults who are healthy, it can really, really, really lead to severe, severe disease and immunocompromised. So our, our kupuna, our keiki, and, and pregnant women too, can really be affected by this. Um, for example, pregnancy, toxo can cause miscarriages, blindness, developmental delay, and even brain damage, even fetal death, you know? Um, so it is very routine for me to inform all of my patients in routine practice, hey, if you're immunocompromised, if you're pregnant, please stay away from, from cat feces. Don't change the litter boxes. We don't want you to get, get this kind of really horrible infection. Um, so right now, toxo is a mandated reportable disease in Hawaii. We have to tell it whenever we, we diagnose it and treat it. Um, Hawaii County actually has multiple cases of toxoplasmosis, um, that was reported, um, and actually around the state, but Hawaii County has one of the highest rates, um, compared to everyone else. Um, and when you compare Hawaii to all the other states here in the US, um, other states don't have any cases. We're in fact, it's very, very rare. So it's pretty unacceptable that us here in beautiful Hawaii, um, that we even have cases of toxo in the first place. It's such an easily preventable communicable disease to take care of. Um, so I'm very worried about feeding feral animals in, in parks, including cats, and public spaces can really present such a health, health risk and health, health problem for us as, as, as humans. Um, so, I mean, feral animals can be other diseases too, you know, including ringworm, cat scratch disease, antibiotic resistance, for example, MRSA, I think about, heard of that, and those diseases.
Thirty seconds, please. Thirty seconds.
But they can affect even the healthy of us too. Um, I've seen them send many to the hospital, and I really don't want that for anyone in our community to have to experience this. Um, so really, you know, feeding feral, feral animals in parks is a really significant community health issue. Um, and honestly, as a native fine physician with strong ties to Hawaii County, I really have a personal and professional responsibility to advocate for these kinds of policies that protect the well-being, well-being and health of our community.
I'm sorry, Cara, but the three minutes are up, so we're gonna have to move on. Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifiers in Hilo are Sharon Caldwell, to be followed by Abby Simmons. Sharon, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Hope you have to turn that. There you go.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thanks again for taking my testimony. Uh, let me just say one thing about that. I'm a, I was a nurse for thirty-three years. Uh, toxoplasmosis is not a problem if you're not pregnant, I mean, for females, for women. If you're not pregnant and cleaning up feces, she's right, about cats. Other people don't get toxoplasmosis ninety-nine percent of the time, so that's, that's nonsense. Um, I'm a feeder. I've been a feeder only eleven years. I've been living here. I, one of my colonies that I feed, I just want you to know, there are no nene where I feed. I mean, there, it's in an area where there's no lakes, rivers, anything, no nene. No native birds. I don't think there's any native plants. So those cats should not be jeopardized for maybe other places there are, but they are not there. So why are we just dumping all the places together and saying every place is a problem? It's not. Our place that I've been working for ten years, we started about fifty-some cats, I think it was. We're down to about twenty-some. This is simply from attrition, natural, uh, the, the colony itself collapses naturally from death, just like people. So those cats are well taken care of. If they are ill, we take them to the vet if we can, but more, the more part is there have been no kittens up there for about five or six years. So it's a very stable colony. The only thing I hear from people, I will admit they're tourists, and you know what? They love the cats. The kids come up and go, mom, mom, cats, can we take a picture? So they're actually a benefit, I think, a good, uh, attribute there for the population here to say, look what they do in Hawaii. This is wonderful. I'm a certified feeder. Uh, we are having, uh, classes from recognized national groups, and I just completed my training on that. I have fed for ten years here. I fed on the mainland at sanctuaries when I was there. And I just think, if you're going to put on anything, for Pete's sakes, help the people who are helping. Don't, don't have us sitting there looking over our shoulders as DNLR are gonna come and arrest us for Pete's sakes. We're doing our best. Out of our pockets, may I say, I've never had anybody pay me. I've had tourists come up and say, can I give you money? I go, no, I can't.
Thirty seconds, please.
So we are doing this out of our own pockets to try and help keep this state good and healthy. These are not feral cats, if you want to call them that. We call them community cats because they are part of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Chair, our next testifier is Abby Simmons, to be followed by Cecilia Alvarado via Zoom. Abby, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Aloha, Chair and council members. My name is Abby Simmons, and I strongly oppose Bill 51. Um, this bill would criminalize feeding feral cats on county property, undermining the most humane and effective tool we have to reduce feral cat populations. Trap, neuter, return, and manage. I want to be clear. I support protecting our native birds and wildlife. I also support animal welfare. Those two values don't have to be in conflict. There are dedicated conservationists working hard to preserve our ecosystems, and there are equally dedicated volunteers helping to humanly manage feral cats. We should be working together and not against each other. On Hawaii Island, over thirty thousand cats have been fixed by organizations like Advocats. These efforts are community-run and data-backed. Just last year, I believe this council recognized their value by passing Resolution 140-25 to fund structured TNR with feeding stations. Feeding isn't the problem. It's really what allows cats to be trapped, sterilized, and in many cases, adopted. When feeding is banned, colonies scatter, become harder to trap, and cats get sick or starve. That's exactly what happened in Waikoloa when a feeding ban caused the cat population to explode. Let's also be honest about the real root causes. Pet abandonment, habitat destruction, and climate change. Warming temperatures are fueling mosquito-borne diseases that kill native birds. If you want to help wildlife, we need solutions rooted in education, spay-neuter, and environmental action, not criminalizing caregivers. And finally, TNR is really cost-effective. It costs about sixty dollars a cat, mostly covered by nonprofits, compared to more than a hundred dollars for trap and euthanize approaches that must be repeated indefinitely. Volunteers are saving the county money while solving a problem the county can't really solve alone. Bill 51 would undo recent progress, criminalize compassion, and push us backward. With my heart, I urge you to please vote no and instead support managed feeding tied to sterilization, strong public education, and a unified vision for protecting both wildlife...
Thirty seconds.
Mahalo, and our communities. Mahalo, Nui Loa, for, um, accepting my testimony.
Thank you so much. Chair, our next testifiers are via Zoom, Sil- Cecilia Alvarado, to be followed by Marilyn Guerin. Cecilia, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate that, um, I'm able to give this testimony as a constituent, as a US Army veteran. Uh, I've been in Hawaii for twenty years, and I've been doing rescue for cats for perhaps over thirty years. TNR, meaning trap, neuter, and release, works. I've seen it work. I see it work every day. I do it. It's unfortunate that this bill has come about because, uh, it doesn't work. This bill, in my opinion, what it's going to do is displace our colony cats by starving them. Sure, starving them, you'll kill some, most maybe, but then they will do what cats do. They will migrate to find food because they're amazing survivors. So now you will create another problem. And in my opinion, you have so much proof already from everyone who has spoken that the people are working together with the county, with animal control, with the nonprofits. I strongly will reiterate what most have already said, that the nonprofits have taken, um, action, and they've been shouldering for decades the burden that the county should have been shouldering and giving funds to. Again, my strong belief here is that this bill is ineffective. It's cruel, and I don't support it. And I would like to ask for some kind of, um, oppo- opposition to this bill or amendment so that we can allow what's going on to continue going on and fund the people who are doing the work. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next testifier is Marilyn Guerin via Zoom, to be followed by Renee Rab here in Hilo Chamber. Marilyn, when you begin, if you could just, uh, reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Oh, you seem to be muted. Hold on just a second. You should have been sent the notification. If you click on that, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Got it.
There you go.
Okay. Hello, my name's Marilyn Garen, and I'm a Mainlander. And once or twice vacationer to your beautiful island each year for the past eight years. We've chosen this island specifically for its really welcoming aloha spirit. I'm curious on how you're going to implement and monitor all the animal lovers who feel the humane calling to feed the betrayed pets. Are the taxpayers of Hawaii or the visitors going to be the ones funding what I feel is a cruel bill? Will I be arrested or fined? If the visitors will be funding this or punished while visiting, I unfortunately will quickly pledge my allegiance to Maui. I will share with my friends this inhumane bill on Facebook and Instagram and X. Perhaps you should use this funding to educate the islanders about abandoning their animals, or use the funds to set up free spay-neuter clinics on your island. I would certainly donate to that solution. I'm a pers- I am personally aware of the many islanders who shell out their own money, feed, medicate, spay, neuter these innocent domestic pets who are left to survive on your very hot volcanic island with no choice in this cruel practice. I actually brought home one of the cats from a colony, and she is a very happy Mainlander. If you pass this poorly thought-out bill, you will have shown your aloha spirit is definitely not real, and we will no longer visit the island. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next two testifiers are here in the Hilo chamber, Renee Rab, to be followed by Fay. Renee, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
The last time I came to testify to the county council was to ask the county to increase money for food. Today, I'm here to ask you not to starve cats. It's humane and ill-advised approach, and it's gonna hamper the ability of cat rescue organizations to continue their, their work to reduce overpopulation and to get cats adopted. That's what I do with Action for Animals. This is Buddy. He climbed into my car at the Ka'ao transfer station. Somebody dumped him. If I had not been there, he would be dead. Instead, he lives at my house, and as you can see, on my bed. I oppose Bill 51, which would criminalize people who food, feed cats of county property. I work with cat rescue. We must feed cats in order to trap them. After a cat is trapped, we work to get it spayed or neutered, checked for diseases, vaccinated, microchipped, and socialized through fostering so that the cat can be adopted into a loving home. This process must begin with feeding to establish enough trust so that the trapping can take place. I'm also a member of the National Sierra Club and the National Audubon Society. I'm concerned about the attacks on preservation of native species and the environment of the, by the Trump administration. We have a very big environmental issues to be worried about and horrified by. I don't understand why we are focused, uh, why we're not focused on those kinds of big things instead of criminalizing good Samaritans who feed cats. A well-thought-out program of colony management is our county's only hope of meaningful protection of all animals. There should not be an either-or between cats and birds or cats and seals. All of us are here now, and regardless of how or when we got here, we'll fi- we need to find solutions to allow all of...
Thirty seconds, please.
All of the beautiful creatures who make their homes in Hawaii thrive. Please vote no on House Bill 51.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is Fay Karabona, to be followed by Gwendolyn Gorg via Zoom. Fay, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Fay Karabona, and I'm here to oppose the bill. I think it's not very efficient. Um, it promotes animal cruelty, and, um, it's, it's a people problem. People do not take care of their animals. They don't get them fixed, you know? And then, when they have no place else to, to take them, they dump them. I see it on Facebook all the time. They need, you know, there's, there's this dog or this cat that's been abandoned on the side of the road, on these, on these roads. But who's gonna help them? You know? If you pass the bill, you're basically having compassionate people being marked as criminals. Don't we have, we're, we're overpopulated already at the jails with people that really, you know, you, you don't need more compassionate people going into jail for something like that. Why not punish the people that are really taking advantage by dumping their animals and not seeking, seeking help? You know, I, I started doing the, uh, spay-neuter thing because when I moved to where I am, there was cats in the bushes. there was cats in the bushes. So, you know, I fixed that. Well, then I went to work and, you know, I didn't know that there was kitten season. Then I'd see all these cats, kittens running around. Well, it's an open place, and they were basically, what I found out from the neighbors that live around the workplace is people are coming in to dump these animals. So yes, I feed them, right? If I look, if they seem like they really need medical care, then I'll try and trap them again. Or sometimes I just don't let them go because they're, they're not going to make it. Yeah, or, you know, I just want them to live out their life as comfortable as, as they can. But I don't think passing this bill would help at all.
Thirty seconds.
But thank you. Thank you for hearing me out. And please, please support the spay-neuter clinics because that really, really helps. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next testifiers are Gwendolyn Gorg to be followed by Suzanne Elizabeth, both via Zoom. Gwendolyn, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Aloha, my name's Gwen George. I've been in Hawaii for 54 years. I've taught for about 44 years. Presently, I teach at Lapa Hoi Hoi Charter School. And what, what can, I'm 84 years old. What concerns me is the solutions that seem to always be presented is if you don't agree with it, kill it. And so I hear, you know, we got people who are offering their support, who are wanting, suggesting spaying and neutering, and you're going to make criminals out of people who are trying to find solutions. You talk about the monk seals. I don't think anyone considers the effects Roundup has as it's going into the oceans, killing our sea life and sea creatures. No one talks about killing those people who, you know, who use Roundup. But we're going to kill people who are trying to make it better. The county needs to come up with solutions so that we can all resolve these problems together. I love the idea of TNR, trap, neuter, and release. Don't make criminals out of all of us who are trying to help and make, make it better. And, and, you know, you're gonna, I talked to some people, and at one point, they were down at Spencer Beach, they were collecting cats, putting them in barrels and drowning them. I mean, where is our humanity? Don't lose humanity. Don't get so brought in and confused. And I noticed almost everybody on here today opposed Bill 51. So you county officials, you represent us. We are concerned. We are trying to do and make it better, and we do offer solutions by helping to spay and neuter these cats. Stand up for what you know is right. Don't, for all of life, don't take the easy way out and decide if we disagree, we'll just kill them. And that's for all of life. Let's stand together and represent humanity. We talk about Hawaii and aloha. Let's stand up and represent. We don't always have to kill what we don't agree to. If we can't agree to it, let's find solutions. Find, you know, we need cat sanctuaries. We need people who care and are concerned about making it better. Listen to me. Do not lose your humanity. Do not choose the easy way out. We don't agree, let's kill them. We don't agree with this species, kill them. Humans, let's kill them.
Thirty seconds, please. Thirty seconds.
So let's stand up, represent your humanity. You know what is right. That's what I have to say, and I wish you the best. Much love, endless blessings, aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is Suzanne Elizabeth to be followed by Jean Marie Thine. Suzanne, if you could just unmute your mic, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. Again, calling out to Suzanne Elizabeth via Zoom. At this time is your chance to provide your testimony. Hearing none, we'll just move on and come back. So we'll come to our Hilo testifier, Jean Marie Thine, to be followed by Frances Puel. Jean Marie, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Jean Marie. It's not working. Is it on now? Hi, I'm Jean Marie Thine, and I am joining the chorus of voices in opposition to this bill. I, I feel that it's so crazy that we are trying to punish the feeders who are not the problem. They're part of the solution. And I'm not going to keep you a long time because I agree with everything that the other opposition speakers have said, but I want to give you a personal story. I, I adopted two kittens a year and a half ago. They had been dumped at KO transfer station. They were picked up by the feeders. They were fostered, and they later were made available for adoption, and now they are very happy members of my family, Frankie and Franny. And so I just want to tell you, it actually works what the feeders are doing, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next testifier is Frances Puel. And then we'll go back to Suzanne Elizabeth via Zoom. Frances, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Aloha. My name is Frances Puel, and I oppose Bill 51. I think you already know that. It is utterly inhumane. I gotta put my glasses on. I'm getting old. Will create more problems, doesn't solve the issue of homeless abandoned felines, and is against our local tradition ingrained in our spirit as islanders to feed all in need, whether a human or an animal. I'm sure you can probably remember your grandparents, your parents saying, "Come, cow, cow. Come, cow, cow." You never turn away a human, you never turn away an animal. Hui Pono Holona supports trap-neuter return and maintain of cat colonies. It has been scientifically proven to be the primary solution for decreasing animal overpopulation. Our community does not support Roundup killings as it creates more problems in attempts to do so and is more costly to the taxpayers. And it also, by removing animals, doesn't solve the problem. It's called the vacuum effect because more animals will come to take up that space that the other animals were taken out of. By far, cat feeders are compassionate individuals who give their time and expense in trapping, arranging spay-neuter appointments, or providing medical assistance. Cats are scanned for microchips and returned to their owners when possible. Friendly abandoned strays and kittens are posted on social media to be rehomed or adopted. Bill 51 is animal cruelty and in conflict with current animal cruelty laws, not our aloha island way. It's brutal starvation and directly works against the most effective spay-neuter programs that decreases unwanted litter births. People will continue to abandon animals at the county water and transfer stations. They are the criminals, not the feeders. Having feeders is necessary to control these areas with the ongoing sterilization programs. Again, support the feeders. They are doing this on their own, at their own expense.
Thirty seconds, please.
I arrange spay-neuter appointments for free, and your constituents amaze me. They call for appointments. Some of them will say, "I don't have a tramp. I'm going to get a tramp. Can you give me an appointment because I want to get these animals spayed and neutered?" Not one will tell me, "I want to get rid of this animal." These are animals that are coming to them. These are animals that are, that they focus somewhere, like the KO dump or whatever, and they're saying, "Franny, can you give me an appointment?"
I'm sorry, but your time is up, so we're going to have to move on. Chair, our next testifier via Zoom is Susan Elizabeth to be followed by Cindy Hartman. Susan, Susan, if you could unmute at this time and reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. Susan, a notification was sent to you for you to unmute. If you could unmute at this time, you'll have three minutes if you could just reintroduce yourself.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had an issue with my computer. Okay, so aloha and thank you for hearing me out. I am not an expert on the trap-neuter and release, but I'm a rational person, so I do trust the data. And I believe that they have a program that's set up in an organized way that protects both the cats, the feeder, or not both, all of, the cats, the feeders, and the community. And my expertise, I guess, lies in my experience. So with that, what does it say about us if we're criminalizing compassion and and empowering cruelty? My situation leaves me to see the feeders as not just my heroes, but my angels. So I take issue with the term abandoned, which I understand people are using it because I know lots of people are strained right now and not able to keep their cats with them. Sorry, I'm flustered because I couldn't get this all set up, but my cat went missing from what I strongly believe to be foul-sighty, either trapping dump or cruelty. And my saving grace, not just for myself, I've experienced loss, I've experienced trauma and worked with it extensively. But when she went missing, I learned of this whole world of propaganda and, and things like the shock I felt today when a person of scholarship discusses this cruelty as a solution, when it is not. If toxoplasmosis is an easily solvable problem, then the best bet to solve it is to have this in a controlled situation where there's some structure and support, and people can understand and trust what's involved in that solution. But in looking for my cat, I found myself in dangerous situations, learning about this phenomenon, that I'm not alone, I'm not the only one. I was looking for her, and I had myself in dangerous situations, was chased by dogs, met with people I don't know.
Thirty seconds, please. Thirty seconds.
Okay, so thirty seconds. They are my hope. If she is microchipped, when she's spayed, vaccinated, microchipped, they're the way that I'm going to find her. That's the solution. And I think that we should consider that, what's really going to help. And that, that data-driven compassionate response that helps people, helps the animals, builds community, and like the traveler with me.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I'm so sorry, but your time is up, so we're going to have to move on at this point. Chair, our next testifier is Cindy Hartman to be followed by Brett Mossman here in the Hilo Chamber. Cindy, if you could unmute your mic at this time, you'll have three minutes if you could just reintroduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Cindy Hartman. I don't know if I'm showing up on your screen. I'm not seeing it on mine. I would like to, before I read my statement. Okay, there we go, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Before I read my statement, which is only two minutes, I would like to address the issue of toxoplasmosis that was brought up. Rats carry toxoplasmosis. There's a lot of toxoplasmosis in Hilo Bay. I think that we should be looking at the rat population instead of the cat population as the major carriers of this. I'm a registered dietitian. I've lived in Hawaii for 30 years. I've been a dietitian for 20 of those. I work at a drug and alcohol rehab in both Honamoo and Kona. I've been in healthcare, in community healthcare, and that involves cats, community cats, cats, dogs, other companion animals. Those are integral parts of a healthy community. How we treat our animals reflects how we treat our humans. This current bill, which I am strongly opposed to, is in direct opposition to a healthy community. Euthanasia by starvation is not the solution. It's a horrible, horrible death. Two days without food, which is all a cat can, has to experience before irreparable liver damage occurs following death. I've been a feeder for a year and a half in Pahoa. I spend about $300 a month feeding about 70 cats at several, at several sites. I'm a certified foster with Action for Animals, and I have a TNR certification. Feeding bans and killing outright cats does not work. It's not the solution. It doesn't address why these cats are on county property or in our shopping centers or our transfer stations. It doesn't address the need for education and for funds to continue programs that do work, TNR-managed, trap, neuter, return, and manage. This is how we handle this situation and solve the problem. We need long-term solutions, not inhumane, short-term fixes. It doesn't attract, address why the cats are there. We have a housing shortage. People are forced to give up their animals because landlords won't allow animals, so they just dump them. There are cruel people who trap cats and dump them. I know personally of several in my own community. There are many programs on the continent that are working. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. There are wonderful organizations here like Action for Animals and the Aloha Animal Alliance.
Thirty seconds, please. Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I just want to tell you that I took on three kittens earlier this week. I have friends that have a total of 10 that they've collected in the last week, and one of them didn't survive. I buried it this morning. I don't want to bury any more cats. And please, please oppose this bill that will lead to the death of many, many cats. Thank you very much for your time and listening to me and the rest of us.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifiers are in Hilo. Brett Mossman to be followed by Jordan Lerma. Brett, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Aloha, Council. My name is Brett Nainoa Mossman. I'm the Forest Bird Recovery Coordinator for the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources. And today, I'm providing testimony in support of this bill. Providing food to animals living in a wild or untamed state can perpetuate the problem of non-native and/or invasive animals impacting Hawaii's natural resources. This problem is seen most clearly with feral cats, which are widespread in Hawaii due to feeding and support by, provided by well-meaning humans. Cats at large can impact Hawaii's native wildlife by preying on them and by transmitting disease, including toxoplasmosis, roundworms, hookworms, or ringworm that can infect cats, humans, and other wildlife. Disease impacts are felt both on land, where they threaten our native bird species, and in the water, as evidenced by death of Hawaiian monk seals and the critically endangered pseudo-orca. Toxoplasmosis infection is, is spread only by feral and free-roaming cats as it can only reproduce within the gut of that species. Living, uh, living in feral or free-roaming state is also unhealthy for the cats themselves. At-large cats have shorter lifespans and higher disease prevalence than do indoor pet cats. The Department of Land and Natural Resources encourages Hawaii County and its efforts to address at-large cat issues. We urge the county to support ordinances that require cats to be managed the same as dogs. This includes requiring cat owners to have their cats licensed and microchipped for identification of their cats. Having a required reliable form of identification increases the likelihood of owned cats being reunited with their owners through required microchip identification. The department also supports requirements, incentives, or educational efforts for pet owners regarding keeping cats indoors or otherwise contained in a fenced, screened enclosure that prevents their escape and access to native wildlife. Options for cats that need to travel outside of their home enclosures could include secure carriers, leashes, except in areas such as, in, set aside for pet socialization, excuse me. The department recommends that cats should be required to be sterilized unless the owner is otherwise a licensed and registered cat breeder in the county. The department notes that Hawaii Invasive Species Council adopted Resolution 19-2 on January 2019, supporting the keeping of cats indoors and the use of peer-reviewed science in mitigating the impacts of cats. This resolution suggests not using a tool known as trap-neuter return.
Thirty seconds.
Studies have demonstrated that this tool does not result in the reduction of the number of cats in the landscape, and in practice, it often involves and in practice, it often involves the maintenance of cat colonies, including on public lands, without permission of the landowner. This resolution can be found at the Hawaii.gov website. Mahalo for you, this opportunity to comment on this measure. And just to provide a little bit of background, I've been working on this issue for over 10 years here in Hawaii, and this is very important, and I think this is a step in the right direction. Mahalo, Nui.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next testifier is Jordan Lerma, to be followed by Sandra Allstrand via Zoom. Jordan, when you begin, you'll have three minutes if you could just reintroduce yourself.
Aloha, Ma'akako, chair, council members. I am Jordan Lerma, and I am in strong support of Bill 51. I'm gonna focus my testimony today on protected species issue. But I also want to acknowledge what Dr. Marv mentioned about this being a serious human health issue, especially if you're pregnant, immunocompromised, elderly, kupuna. County spaces should be safe for all members of the community. That should be an important truth. Folks that are pregnant shouldn't have to avoid county parks because there are cat colonies. That's just inhumane to us as a society. Then I have the opposite problem with cats. They reproduce really slowly. At Lillu County Park, over the past 10 years, there's been six nesting attempts and 16 eggs laid. Only one of those eggs become an adult. That's because of cats, dogs, bongos, and toxoplasmosis. The veterinarian who did the necropsy on Nene Gossling that died at that park is on our Zoom meeting today. And I encourage you to ask him directly about this issue, about toxoplasmosis, about the prevalence of this parasite in Hawaii and its threats to not just the animals we care about, native wildlife, but humans, us. We've documented people feeding feral cats and Nene over 40 times this year on county properties. In 11 of those instances, directly feeding cats when Nene are present. And we prompt them, we ask them to not do that, pick up the food, and they ignore us, walk away, drive away quickly. We've seen the food attract pigs, goats, chickens. I mean, there's a lot of other feral animals that are attracted to these types of feeding behaviors. And park maintenance is left to clean up a lot of these messes. I would highly suggest reading Senator Tim Richard's testimony in support of how this bill aligns with the state biosecurity objectives and the state funding already allocated towards addressing some of these issues. Some are asking for a provision to allow permitted feeding, and I urge you to reject that. It makes enforcement way more difficult, it delays real solutions, and it doesn't address the underlying cause. I mean, I think we all agree that abandonment is the issue, right? We aren't the enemy, Nene aren't the enemy. It's the folks that are irresponsible pet owners that are dumping pets at these places that they're being fed. And they'll continue dumping them because people are feeding them. As long as people are feeding them, they'll see it as a safe place to leave their pet when they leave this island. Nene are protected by state and federal law.
Thirty seconds, please.
We've already been approached by national organizations that have sued Koi County successfully in 2010 and are currently suing Maui County for take of protected species. I was part of the Aloha Animal Alliance pilot program, and they don't have the necessary federal and state permits to continue doing that work. Any work that pertains to protected species absolutely needs to be permitted. County governments are not immune to that as well. They need to be able to get the necessary permits to conduct these types of work.
Thank you for your testimony. Unfortunately, the three minutes are up, so we're gonna have to move on. Chair, our next testifier is Sandra Allstrand, to be followed by Jennifer Schneider. Sandra, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm in order, chair. I just want to remind the public, while we're in this space, to please not make any verbal comments or feedback as testifiers are providing their testimony. We want to make sure everyone is able to share. Thank you.
Chair, no?
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Sandra Allstrand. I'm a board member with Action for Animals, and I've been an animal advocate for probably all my life. I oppose Bill 51. There's been a lot of testimony outlining the factual and scientific reasons to oppose this bill from others who oppose it. I'm going to discuss the moral reasons. The Dalai Lama's birthday was this last Sunday. When he was asked what his religion was, he replied kindness. Mahatma Gandhi stated, "The greatness of a nation can be judged by the way its animals are treated." These two powerful spiritual leaders led from their hearts and realized that we will not reach our full potential as human beings until we can lead with kindness and compassion for all beings on this planet. This bill is neither kind nor compassionate. I am not who I am, but I do know that our beautiful island is the Aloha State, and this bill does not embody the spirit of aloha, does not embody the spirit of love, peace, compassion, and mercy. I respectfully ask that you all look into your hearts when voting on this bill. Is it kind to cats and their caretakers? Is it compassionate, and does it promote peace? We can find solutions that respect all life. We must find solutions that benefit all life on this island and this planet. Thank you very much. Please oppose this bill.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, the next testifier you have via Zoom is Jennifer Schneider. Jennifer, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Aloha, county council members. My name is Jennifer Schneider. I have lived in Hawaii for over 20 years. I have been feeding community cats for over 10 years in Hilo and Pahoa. I oppose Bill 51 because it criminalizes me and many others that care. Not only have I been feeding... Excuse me. Not only have I been feeding community cats, but I have been trapping, spaying, and neutering, microchipping, vaccinating, and managing all of my colonies. There are no Nene or native birds at my colonies. Every single cat in my colonies is fixed with no help from the county. The county does not offer any spay-neuter clinics. Let me repeat this. The county does not offer any spay-neuter clinics, which leads to people abandoning their animals. The county has ignored this issue. I work full-time, yet spend hours each week managing my colonies because I care. What have you done? Do you care? It is your responsibility, your kuliana, to ask your ohana how best you can serve us. You can serve us by, one, setting up free spay-neuter clinics around the island on a monthly basis. Two, you can enforce the anti-abandonment laws. Three, you can offer resources on TNRM, trap, neuter, return, manage. This bill is not serving, it is criminalizing. Starving innocent creatures is not aloha. Especially since so many people dump their cats at the transfer stations. There are so many of us that take care of them. If this bill moves forward, it must be amended to clearly state that approved caretakers under county-recognized programs will not be in violation of the law. All my cats, whether they live at my home, at the dump, in the parks, or on the streets, are my children. Community cats are...
Thirty seconds, please, thirty seconds.
Community cats are our ohana. It is all our kuliana to care for them. The only solution is kindness. I oppose Bill 51. Mahalo, Nui.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, our next two testifiers in the Hilo chamber are Velda Lawrence Breen, to be followed by Ian Cole. Velda, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah? Velda Dawn Lawrence, Marie Elizabeth. In the mic, okay. My name, I go by Dawn, after all that. To each of you, I really want to say that I oppose this Bill 51. I know this is probably redundant, and you've heard everything, but what everyone is saying is true. Opposed or against, there are issues, but I don't think this is the answer. Criminalizing people for feeding these cats. As you see, I'm here with my 85-year-old mother back here, who is one of those women that feeds these cats. She has a colony that started with one abandoned cat who was pregnant. We have reached out and tried to get help, trying to get it spayed, neutered, adopted, whatever, and we haven't been able to get that help. Now this colony is 12 cats. We have trapped and neutered all of them. I'm really nervous, sorry. And so, this isn't the solution to the problem. Not saying that anyone is wrong here, but this is not the solution. It's common sense. Criminalizing, writing tickets to elderly people who take their social security checks and feed these animals on their own, have them spayed, neutered, vaccinated, is not the answer. So I'm asking you to please think about this, please listen, please hear what people are saying. This is not the answer. There are other answers. We need help. We need an animal control system that works. We need funding for other things to stop this. So please, listen to these people, all of them, and this is not the solution. Let's find a solution, but this is not it. If you had a cat wander up starving to death, and you have to look at it and see it starving to death, and you have to step over it, that is not a good feeling because we have had that happen. It is not a good feeling. So please, hear us, and that's all I can say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next testifier in the Hilo chamber is Ian Cole, and then we'll go back out to Zoom, calling out for Marcia Heller or Paula Pippen. But at this time, Ian Cole, it's your chance to provide testimony. Not seeing anyone getting up, so we'll reach out to our Zoom testifiers. If we have a Marcia Heller or Paula Pippen at this time, if they'd like to unmute their device and introduce themselves, they'll have three minutes. Again, Marcia Heller or Paula Pippen. Seeing no response via Zoom, we'll come back to Hilo. Rachel Royblatt, to be followed by Leila Beatty. Rachel, when you begin, you'll have three minutes if you could just reintroduce yourself.
Aloha, council members. My name is Dr. Rachel Royblatt, and I have been a resident and a homeowner in both Pahoa and Keau for the last 11 years. You've heard from so many people who are experts, much more so than myself, so I really don't want to belabor any of the many things that have already been shared here. Unfortunately, it seems once again we have a debate over things as simple as science and facts. And I would like to thank Councilmember Kleinfelder, not for the content of your bill, but for having brought it so that you get to see just how passionately your constituents care about this issue and how many people have been devoting a lot of their own resources, time, energy, when we're all very busy people with very busy lives. I'm a bit disappointed that my own councilwoman isn't in her chair right now to hear what I have to say, but I can tell you that people will react if you vote in favor of this bill. This will not go away. I do not believe that this is the best use of our resources to pass this bill. Most of the people, I would venture to say, who support feeding cats also care about Nene extinction. It is not an either-or. When I teach social policy, I try to teach my students to pay attention to unintended consequences of policies that they are trying to correct if they are crafting good legislation. And the unintended consequences of, as we've heard, criminalizing the caregivers, not to mention, it is much too common in this community to dump cats, dead or alive, at the transfer stations. If we want to fund and give resources to a cat colony like what exists on Maui County, on the island of Lanai and others that I have heard very good things about, apparently, there's a lot of good research and data and ways that that can happen. And those resources could be directed to helping solve this problem that compassionate people are spending a lot of their own time and money trying to solve. You've heard from Francis, El No, Cindy, Amanda, Sylvia, Jennifer Schneider, all with great examples of why to vote against this bill. I really believe, I can say I'm a personal friend of Franny and Frankie, Jean-Marie's two cats that were rescued at the transfer station. Some of you are cat people, some of you aren't.
Thirty seconds, please.
That's fine. We don't fit stereotypes. We are all kinds of people with all kinds of interests. But this bill will not solve this problem. Please, take the time to vote against this and then support you in drafting legislation that will actually fix the problem, okay? Thank you very much for my time and for yours.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, your next testifiers here in the Hilo chamber are Leila Beatty, Shalay Newman, and I believe Violet Beatty as well, with the same family. Leila, when you begin, you'll have three minutes if you could just reintroduce yourself. Oh, turn it, you turned it off, you can turn it right back. There you go.
It is working? Okay. Hi, my name is Lily Bia, and I am very strongly opposing making it illegal to feed these cats because it... Sorry. Like, it is not the fault of the cats, it is the fault of the people. And the people who are feeding these cats, they aren't doing anything wrong. They, these cats are innocent. They are not asking to be go-karted out on the streets and be having to starve for days or die of starvation. And these people are feeding them, and it's very important that... Sorry. These cats, like, they're innocent. They haven't done anything wrong. They're just trying to simply survive. And so, these people who are feeding them and giving them a better chance of surviving is not the problem. And maybe instead of banning feeding these cats, maybe there should be ways and there should be opportunities to maybe like fix these cats and spay and neuter them. And that way, they can't give birth to more stray cats, but instead, they're still able to live, but they're not going to be making the population bigger. And maybe we should be holding the people who are abandoning these cats accountable. I actually have a cat who I found, and I could see his bone, and I found him at the Keau transfer station. Somebody had tossed him in the glass bin. He didn't do anything to deserve that. He was simply trying to live. And I think that cats, that they should be given the opportunity to live without suffering and live without being starved to death and that they, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next two testifiers are Shalay Newman, to be followed by Violet Bia. Shalay, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Shalay Newman. I'm here today as a mother, and I want to speak to you about something that touches me deeply, a bill that makes it illegal to feed stray cats. As a parent, I teach my children every day about kindness and compassion, values that shape who we are and how we interact with this world. Feeding a stray cat might seem like a small thing, but it's an act of love and empathy that we shouldn't overlook. When we feed a hungry cat, we're not just giving it food, we're giving it a chance, a chance to survive, to feel cared for, and to be treated with the same dignity that we expect for ourselves. I teach my children that when we see someone or something in need, we don't turn away. We offer what we can, and that's what feeding a stray cat is all about, offering a little bit of kindness in a world that's very harsh. This bill teaches us that kindness should be punished. It would make it illegal to help an animal in need. That's not just unfair to the cats, it's unfair to the people who show compassion. We need to understand that these animals bring value to our lives. Cats in particular are known to reduce stress, help people feel less lonely, and even lower blood pressure. For many, a stray cat provides emotional support, companionship, and a sense of connection. Moreover, studies show that interacting with cats can improve our mental health. They reduce feelings of anxiety and depression and provide comfort, especially for those who may feel isolated or are struggling mentally and emotionally. They may not speak, but they have incredible ways of comforting us just by being there. There are better ways to handle stray animals, like spay and neuter programs or education on responsible pet care, without taking away the compassion people show to animals in need. As a mother, I ask you, let's not make kindness a crime. Let's teach our children that showing love and care for animals is something to be proud of. That empathy is something to be proud of, not something to be punished. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. Our next testifier is Violet Bia. Violet, when you begin, you'll have three minutes. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Violet, and I'm here to represent the stray cats that can't speak for themselves. I'm opposing this bill because all living things, all living beings deserve to eat. It's not their fault they were abandoned. And I have a question for all of you. Does this mean that if I fed a stray cat, would I be arrested or fined? People who abandon animals should be fined, not the people trying to feed and help them. I have personally been hurt by animals who weren't treated correctly, and I know the answer isn't to hurt more animals. My mom has taught me to answer cruelty with compassion. It was cruel to abandon cats because they need homes too, just like us. So we should meet that cruelty with compassion and show them love and find them homes and families to care for them. And I don't want to want people to be forced to act, act on animal cruelty and not be allowed to feed them. And Mr. Kleinfelder, you came to my school at Mountain V Elementary, and I'd like to ask you, are you saying being compassionate is wrong? Are you teaching other, other kids like me that will be punished for being kind? Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony, Chair. At this time, if we could take, transition over to Kona for our next testifier. Scott, if you could, please.
Cancel that, really, that's for C R C O C.
Ah, thank you. And with that, Chair, I'm going to reach out to a couple individuals in our Zoom room, which we could not recognize initially, to ask if we could, if they would like to provide testimony. First of which is a user by the name of Terry. Terry, if you'd like to provide testimony at this time, you'll have three minutes. If you unmute and introduce yourself.
I'm, I'm not in a position to provide testimony, but I can answer questions from the public.
Understood. I, I believe it was reaching out to another, but thank you so much. The next person we'll reach out to is a phone number with the numbers ending eight, four, four, three at the end. If you'd like to provide testimony at this time, you'll have three minutes. Next, we find that Paula Pippen has joined us. So Paula, at this time, if you'd like to provide testimony, if you could unmute your mic, you'll have three minutes. Please reintroduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Paula Pippen. And I don't understand why we should have such a bill to even hurt animals and all that. If, if we spent this kind of time on taking care of them and taking care of the real problem, which is the abusers, the people that abandon them, and what have you, that's what we should be doing with our time and the money. You know, we have people here that give their time, their, and feed them and take care of them and try our best to get them spayed and neutered, you know, just so they can have a cat colony. And what we're trying to do out here, not just feed them, we're trying to establish a healthy cat colony. And we're trying to also show our keiki, hey, let's not abandon animals. That's not okay. Let's take care of them. If you see some animal, an innocent animal hurt, take care of it. Don't kick it, don't throw rocks at it, you know? Let's start having some hearts and start caring about our island and caring about our children and everything around us. And not, don't be giving people $500 fines for feeding cats. I'd rather have cats than roaches and mice and rats. You know, we don't need all that. We need loving, kind people here. And I want to say thank you to that young person that just spoke before me. Thank you, young person. You are very wise, and I hope everyone listens to you. Thank you. That's all I have for you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And Chair, with your indulgence, I'm going to ask if Lauren Turnbafo, if at this time, you'd like to provide testimony, noting that you requested to provide testimony at a later time. If you'd like to provide testimony at this time, you have three minutes. If you'd unmute and reintroduce, if you'd unmute and introduce yourself.
Hello?
Hello? If you'd like to provide...
Hi, yes. Hi, this is Lauren. First off, thanks, Council, for listening to testimony on this, on this issue. My name is Lauren Turnbafo, and I'm the president and co-founder of Aloha Animal Alliance, a Hawaii-based nonprofit. Our mission is to design and implement programs that help keep animals out of shelters. This includes spay-neuter, microchip clinics, pop-up wellness services for underserved communities, and structured, data-driven solutions for managing community cats. We cannot support Bill 51 in its current form. We were invited to help develop a sustainable approach to the cat situation on Hawaii Island. In response, we proposed a data-driven, managed-trap-neuter-return pilot project. Managed-trap-neuter-return. This model includes certified caregiver training, digital colony tracking, designated feeding locations, and collaborative oversight. We intentionally chose a challenging pilot area, including coastline, tourism zones, and sensitive habitats, because if it can work there, it can work anywhere. We built a multifaceted project team that includes local government, business leaders, environmental advocates, volunteers, and residents. This is a broad-based effort intended to build a model the county can be proud of. But here's the reality we're still facing. Five years after the pandemic, our county shelters remain closed to the public. That means residents who can no longer keep an animal due to addiction, hardship, illness, or allergies have nowhere to turn. Yes, of course, animal control is doing the best it can with limited resources. But the reality is, cats cannot be accommodated today, and rebuilding shelter capacity will take time. So what options do residents have? Either surrender a cat to a system with limited space, few transfer partners, and uncertain outcomes, or release it into the wild and hope someone cares for it. This is the heartbreaking choice many people face. That's why programs like ours are so essential. And yet, Bill 51, as it's currently written, risks criminalizing even the most responsible efforts. We, we support the intent of this bill, or at least what we think the intent is.
Thirty seconds, please, thirty seconds.
About unmanaged feeding in sensitive areas. That's why our solution includes training, accountability, and when appropriate, relocation of the feeding to approved zones. But without an exemption for certified MTNR programs, this, this message becomes, even if you do everything right, you still will face penalties. That erodes public trust. It discourages participation, and it drives the hard work back underground, where it cannot be measured, improved, or supported.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Your three minutes are up, so we'll have to move on.
Thank you.
Chair, our next testifier via Zoom is Ann Kawabata and Howard Kawabata. Ann, if at this point, you'd like to provide testimony, I ask that you unmute your mic and let us know. If not, we can continue to move forward. Hearing nothing, we'll move on and ask Danielle Erickson. If at this time, Danielle, if you'd like to provide testimony, if you'd unmute and reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Aloha. Chair and honorable council members, my name is Danielle Erickson. I am a resident of Kuna. I am an elementary educator and an avid volunteer for native species of Hawaii. I testified before you today in strong support of Bill 51, which prohibits the feeding of stray or feral animals on county-owned property. This is a critical evidence-based measure essential for the ecological survival of our unique native species and the safeguarding of public health across Hawaii islands. The science is clear. Feral animals, especially cats, are devastating our native ecosystems. Feral cats are globally recognized as one of the most damaging invasive species, preying on our irreplaceable native birds like the Nene and Wahoo or Hawaiian Petrel. Even well-fed cats retain their innate hunting instincts, killing billions of birds annually across the United States. Beyond predation, feral cats are the sole definitive host for toxoplasma gondii. A single infective cat can shed billions of infectious eggs in its feces, contaminating our land and ocean for years. This parasite is a leading cause of death for our critically endangered Hawaiian monk seals. With fifteen confirmed deaths as of 2023, it is also a major threat to our state bird, the Nene, including a recent ghostling death directly attributed to toxoplasmosis. Furthermore, feeding feral animals creates hubs that attract other invasive pests like chickens, rats, and mongooses. These concentrations facilitate the spread of other serious diseases, including leptospirosis, which can infect humans, and avian influenza, a threat to our native birds. When Nene consume cat food, it leads to severe nutritional deficiencies and habituates them to humans, increasing their vulnerability to vehicle strikes and predation. Therefore, in addition to passing this essential ordinance, we must commit to a multifaceted humane approach, which includes comprehensive public education. We need robust campaigns to educate our community about responsible pet care. This means emphasizing the importance of spaying and neutering, keeping cats indoors to protect them and native and wildlife, and not abandoning pets. We also need increased funding for animal management. We must allocate more resources to support animal control agencies and nonprofit organizations, such as the Lanai Cat Sanctuary, which is a good alternative. Bill 51 is crucial, evidence-based. It will help stop the perpetuation of unhealthy girl animal populations.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Your three minutes are up, so we're going to have to move on. Thank you so much for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is our Ann Kawabata and Howard Kawabata. Ann, when you begin, if you could just reintroduce yourself, you'll have three minutes. And then Howard, when you transition to your testimony, if you could introduce yourself for your three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ann Kawabata. I'm in Hilo, and I'm here in support of Bill 51 and just voicing my personal opinions and what we see on our four to five times a week walk through Liliokalani Park. So besides the Nene getting affected by the feeding of the cats and the babies passing away through toxoplasmosis, I do value human health. And we notice that there are lots of families, children, adults, babies, pregnant women, who use the pavilion by the old sumo area. So there are cats, there are abandoned cats in the parking lot and in that pavilion area where these people go to enjoy. And they are not aware, I'm pretty sure, that the cats are lying all over the picnic table, the benches, the ground, the yard, and that no one is cleaning up after, after them, after they dirty the area. And so, we're worried that human beings will very soon get affected, or maybe they have, but we haven't heard about it directly. And, and so, we support this bill as a way of getting started to protect human life. And now, besides cats being fed to our walk, we have observed that people are now feeding the pigeons and the birds close to the Isles area and within Liliokalani Park. So then, we're going to be faced with another big problem, because I'm pretty sure these birds also carry bad things that can affect animals and humans. Thank you very much.
Can I start now?
Yes, sir. If you could just reintroduce yourself.
I'm, I'm Howard Kawabata, and I just want to say that I am for this bill. Toxoplasmosis, if one child gets infected, it's on us and on you for not doing enough to eliminate feral animals, cats, and animals. We've already lost Nene to the toxoplasmosis at Liliokalani Park, and we try to walk there as often as we can. And it's, it's just horrible to see the, our state bird disappearing. Next of our pigeons, as my wife just mentioned. I understand it carries a disease, and also on Oahu, at the zoo, they removed them a while back. I don't know what the disease was, but they did remove pigeons because of it. Now, we also have pigs in our Hilo area that we never used to have before. Now, in Wailea State Park, I actually saw some lady feed it. And at Rubbish Dump Road, just yesterday, I saw about six to eight of them walking on the side of the road. Recently, someone in Oahu shot darts at chickens because of no resolution. Instead of government going after the chickens, they're going after the person who is trying to eradicate them in his area. To me, that's wrong. You guys as a government unit got to take care of the feral animals, period. Now, feral animals should not become established, but eliminated, because they are not local creatures. They should be eliminated and not being put back after they're neutered and whatever. They don't belong here, period. This also includes the ducks and the geese at Wailea State Park. They are destroying our ecosystem by eating the small fish, and they got to go too. Somebody keeps dropping them off because they can't take care of them. Get rid of it. Don't put it for somebody else to have to suffer through. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, calling on Bethany Letoto. If at this time, you'd like to provide testimony, this is your opportunity to unmute yourself. Bethany, if you'd like to provide testimony at this time, if you could just reintroduce yourself.
Aloha mai kako. My name is Bethany Letoto. I'm a resident of Hilo Town. I'm a small business owner, and I am a mother of three. I strongly support Bill 51 prohibiting the feeding of feral animals on county property. This is including, but not limited, to pigs, chickens, and, yes, cats. As a mom of small kids, all of my kids are under the age of five, I am particularly concerned about toxoplasmosis and other pathogens in areas where cat colonies are fed. Toxoplasmosis is a serious health risk, not only to the keiki, pregnant women, and immunocompromised people in Kuna in our community, but it's a major health hazard for many of our beloved native species, including Nene and monk seals, as we've discussed already. On a personal note, I want to share that I have a one-month-old baby. For the duration of my pregnancy, I avoided many county parks simply because I did not want to risk exposing my unborn son to a lifetime of toxoplasmosis. I still avoid Liliokalani Gardens for that reason. My kids are super small. Kids are gross. They put their hands in their mouth a lot. This bill isn't about criminalization, it isn't about killing, it isn't about making enemies of anyone. It's about creating safe places in the community for us to use without fear of contracting diseases. I don't think that any of you would advocate for TNR for rats or mongooses or mice, and those are all creatures that are attracted to these feeding sites. Furthermore, on a practical note, feeding feral animals on county property puts those very animals at risk. None of us want to see cats smooched on Kalanianaole Avenue. None of us like that. Again, I support Bill 51 for our Ina, for our keiki. That's all I have to say. Mahalo for your time and attention.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And with that, going out to our Zoom users, if there is anyone who would require, requested to provide testimony but was not called upon, this is your opportunity to let us know by unmuting and introducing yourself. Again, if you had requested to provide testimony and we're not called upon, please... If you had requested to provide testimony and were not called upon, please introduce yourself at this time. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, this is Kurt Shanaman. I live in Volcano, and I'm a retired registered nurse with a history of infection control, and I'm a former combat medic. I had an eloquent presentation today to tell you, but I'm going to forego that because everybody has pretty much touched on the trap neuter release and so forth. I would like to give some clarity. As a registered nurse working in severe infections, I have had an experience with toxoplasmosis. Toxoplasmosis in the human being is almost endemic. And what that means is that it's in everyone's blood. It's sort of like herpes virus. It's in there, and it's always going to be there. It is a normal mild disease if you catch it normally, and it can be treated with medication, and it's only for people at risk, like immunocompromised people like with HIV. Pregnant women can get it, but again, there are medications to treat it, and it won't harm the fetus. The other thing is that I heard a lot of testimony from DLNR about how this has to be killed, everything has to be killed. And other people have spoken that way, that, well, we gotta get rid of ducks too. And I just want you to be aware of the medical reason that toxoplasmosis is carried by rats. And rats tend to eat the eggs of the nei nei. It's not the cats. They don't eat their eggs. They will attack a small animal if it's smaller than them. They don't even attack a feral chicken once it's fully grown. So there is a lot of misinformation that I heard in here. So I would like to voice my strong opposition to Bill fifty-one because this has been tried numerous places throughout the continental United States, and it has always failed. It doesn't produce the results that you are trying to obtain. The problem really lies, and this has been said before today, that with the person that dumps the animals, I think that there should be severe penalties for people that abandon the animals. If they were abandoning children, there certainly would be, but for animals, it's just as.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds, please.
Yes, thank you. People are spending their own money and taking care of this. I've been doing trap neuter release for over forty years. I have six rescue cats inside, and I have several cats that are coming to my house in Volcano that I'm feeding, and we get them vaccinated and treated, and all my cats are indoors. They never go out again. And that's what people should do. They should keep their cats indoors. This bill is severely flawed.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Kurt, but at this time, we're gonna have to move on. And again, the request will be put out. If there was anyone who was missed in the Zoom while we were calling out names, this is your opportunity to inform us of that. Anyone who we may have missed in the Zoom, if you'd like to introduce yourself at this point, this is your opportunity. Last call again, if anyone in Zoom we missed calling, this is your opportunity to introduce yourself. Let us know, and you'll have your three minutes. Hearing and seeing nun chair, those are all the testifiers you have.
Thank you very much. Okay, so for those who are here for the three P M meeting, this is gonna be pushed back until we finish our two, our resolution, our bill in my committee. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, can you read in Resolution two-two-seven dash two-five?
If anyone would like to testify in Resolution two-two-seven dash two-five, please speak up now. This is your last chance. Hearing and seeing nun, Resolution two-two-seven dash two-five adopts the County of Hawaii twenty-twenty-five Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, introduced by Councilmember Onishi by request. Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution two-two-seven dash two-five.
Second.
Motion by Cherry Nava, second by Ms. Houston. Civil Defense, can you come up? Barry, so we have Barry Pariat. Are you like Assistant Administrator? Oh, you can't, you gotta turn him back on. You can introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Barry Pariat. I'm an administrative officer with the Hawaii County Civil Defense Agency.
And then you can go ahead with the presentation.
Okay, the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is a requirement put on us by federal law, and it makes the county eligible for mitigation grants and preparedness grants. Without the plan, we're not eligible for federal funding. What this plan, our current plan expires on September eighteenth of this year. We're required to have a plan in place, or we lose the eligibility. The current plan is being reviewed by the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. They have to review the plan. And it's also being reviewed at this time by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, who accepts the plan. They accept the plan, but on the condition that the county adopts the plan. And that's why we're here today, because if the county doesn't adopt the plan, the plan is not valid. And I can tell you, the plan, we did a lot of revisions this year, primarily focusing on the goals and the objectives in the plan, to focus it more on moving forward, keeping it in alignment with resilience. The whole theme for emergency management is creating resilient communities, a whole community approach to doing that. And that's what the plan, we put a lot of that into the plan, the revisions and stuff. It addresses the hazards that can impact us. And there wasn't a whole lot of revision on the hazards. Not a lot has changed, just some things updated for what's impacted us. And with that, the actions to address things, it's a five-year plan. That's the horizon for the plan. We're not trying to address things twenty years from now. We're addressing immediate concerns. And so we have, I believe, thirty-eight actions in the plan that will seek federal funds, grant money to implement over the course of these five years. And that's what's before you today.
Thank you very much. Members, anybody?
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Pariat. Appreciate you being here today. If you could just give us an overview of some of the public outreach, I think a number of us have been in some of those meetings and kind of the community engagement side, if you could kind of speak to that level about the work you've kind of put out there in terms of community input, as well as kind of that steering committee.
Okay, with the community outreach, that's a requirement by FEMA to get community involvement. It's the whole community concept in there. So we had community meetings. We hold them on each side of the island. We had an initial meeting on each side of the island, which was in-person. And we had a meeting after the objectives and objectives were determined. And that was to solicit, that meeting was to give the goals and objectives to the public and to solicit actions from the public. Those, the first two meetings on each side of the island, well, they were well-attended on the Kona side. We have five people on the Hilo side for the first one. I don't think we had any for the second one. And the final meeting, after the plan was completed and being introduced to the community, we only did it via an aleo. So we advertised it out, and it was recorded, and it was broadcast live, the presentation there. We actually had three people show up for that. I don't know how many people viewed it online, but it's still available to look at. So that was the extent of our community outreach. There was a steering committee. We brought, we bring in individuals across the county departments, across state departments, federal agencies, and community members. We primarily focus on our CERT teams because they're out there volunteering and doing things. So we engage them primarily to get that perspective from the community, from the individual, non-governmental individual in there. And they are the individuals who helped refine the goals and the objectives, and then vetted the actions that came in.
And so it was a combination of both the core planning and the community input that kind of ranked the hazard risks then? How was that rubric kind of spelled out in that course of action?
It was. There were, part of the community engagement involved surveys. So even if you did not intend, you know, surveys, the survey monkey thing. So even if you didn't attend the meeting, you could take the survey and put your input in there. And so the feedback from those surveys was considered when we were ranking the hazards. And what we also look at is the last five years since the plan has reworked, maybe five years, is what has impacted us in the last five years, and what is the severity? And so brush fires has always been the number one thing that comes in there. Other things may be more catastrophic to us, such as a tsunami or an earthquake, that we're just not getting the impacts like we're getting with brush fires and flooding events. So you would say, well, why is a brush fire rated higher than an earthquake or a tsunami? But that's the reason, because it's impacting us at a more frequent, more, a greater frequency.
Thank you. And if I could dive into some of the recommended actions a little bit, and kind of just get your thoughts on, you know, these are those, these are those priorities recommended from all these steps and stages based upon the ranking of the risks and of hazards, whatnot, and then categorize some of these recommended actions. These are kind of in place in the plan and something that sits with civil defense, but I'm assuming that there's gonna be this collaboration piece moving forward to kind of tackle some of these challenges.
Yes, what they've been putting in place with plans, because across the nation, the people or jurisdictions put actions in plan, in the plan, and then they never execute them. Sometimes it's valid reasons they couldn't get the funding to do it. Other times, they just ran out of time. And so of the actions in the plan, civil defense is responsible for some. There are personal actions that we're looking at. Department of Public Works has many actions. Department of Water Supply has actions in there. DEM has actions in there. Obviously, the wastewater treatment plant's part of, that's a big part of that. So it's not just civil defense has actions, but we do are responsible for shepherding those actions and making sure people are seeking funds for them, for the plan or the action, and implementing it.
So for example, some of them relate to, you know, Planning Department, some, was there any sort of integration with the process of the general plan and the work that kind of we're gonna be seeing here pretty soon through all the works of the planning commissions and whatnot?
We work with the Planning Department. Have we specifically sat down and correlated actions in the Hazard Mitigation Plan with the General Plan? We have not done that. That's been my goal for a while to make that happen. I see the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as an overarching plan because it identifies the threats. And then the General Plan is supposed to address how we deal with those threats on a daily basis via through zoning, building codes, and that nature.
I guess my last question is, what are your recommendations on taking some of these action plans and action steps, recommended actions? We don't want everyone to be sitting in these silos, and I know you're taking it hard about how we collaborate across these departments. So what are some of the recommendations you have to engage with some of these steps and try and tackle some of these challenges our communities face?
Well, it's simply us sitting down and communicating with planning and research and development and public works because those are the major players as far as for us for community safety, being able to prepare the community. So getting together, we meet on a fairly regular basis. We don't have a scheduled meeting for that. But we do talk about plans and projects that are implementing. We'd like to make that a more formal process, and we probably should.
Thank you, as an administrative officer. Appreciate your thoughts. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, sure. Ms. Kimble?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and just on behalf of my community, the feedback from the ham radio sessions you folks did has been very, very positive. So thank you for that outreach and tell your team for that work. Is this particular plan exclusive to natural hazards? I noticed that things like cybersecurity, epidemic, terrorist, you know, these human-caused disasters or hazards are not included. Is there a reason?
FEMA is refocusing, they're refocusing, yeah. They were originally intended only to address natural hazards. That's what FEMA exists for. And so they're refocusing, like Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, back to that. So they did not want any of the man-caused hazards in here. That's primarily responsibility of the Department of Homeland Security, and I can't tell you what they're doing to address that. But the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan now is only supposed to address natural hazards.
Interesting. That aligns with some of the information that I've received from the national side as well that the administration is really trying to focus more on prevention instead of response, which, you know, obviously, this Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is intended to do. That said, my hope is that there'll be funding that lines up to actually, you know, address the prevention side, which was gonna be my next question. Has this, this process was happening kind of simultaneously with the general plan update? Is some of this included, or is that something that we're gonna have to pay attention to as we take up the general plan starting tomorrow?
There wasn't collaboration per se about specifically addressing the general plan with the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. So you would have to be more cognizant when you're looking at the general plan, seeing what is in there and what could be implemented based on the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, thank you for that. So that's just something for us to think about, looking at the action items. And here, with that lens, as we take up the general plans starting tomorrow, because I do think that's one of the places where, as Councilmember Houston was talking about, that integration is important in terms of decision-making, particularly about land use.
Yeah, and that is one of the actions in the plan now to integrate the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan into the other plans in the county.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Okay, yeah, I think that's it for questions. I mean, a lot of work to do here. I do think there are opportunities for us for federal funds for some of these items that you've proposed, and I'd like to offer to help with that, so let's talk offline.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is the Kanili'i. Hi, photo.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you for being here. I know we're behind schedule, so I apologize, and thank you for your patience. Something I've been thinking about is when we have, and this kind of goes back to Val Point Dexter again. Not against you, Ms. Kimble, just, she said something one time that caught me off guard, which is, well, what happens when we have multiple events at one time? I was like, yeah, 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 okay, okay, but the reality, I was thinking about it, if the eruption had taken out P G V, and we lost thirty percent of our firm power on island immediately, then what does the county do? And it's not so much, I mean, it is a county question, it's not, because county residents depend on the utility to provide the power. But I'm looking over at the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Do you folks take that into account when you look at residents and our hazard mitigation? I'm looking at generators for different places in case of a power failure. But in the case of a larger event, what happens when we have a catastrophe and lose power? Is that included in the plan?
In this plan, we address emergency power. So we do not address, like I said, these are projects that are supposed to be completed in a five-year period, not a, something, solution sitting on the shelf or on the shelf for this particular plan. So it doesn't address something like that. If that were to happen, then we would, obviously, the county doesn't have the resources to address that. And that's where FEMA comes into play, and there would be a request for FEMA, come in, we need these resources. And they do, in fact, the two forty-ninth Power Generation Unit, which is based in Schofield, not Schofield Barracks, at Chafter, Fort Chafter on Oahu. They're a prime power unit. They're positioned here for a reason, and that is to be able to provide power of that nature to a community when this happens. So they have generators, they can power grids, and that, they have the capability of doing that. So that would be a resource that we would call upon to do that. That's a temporary solution. It's a stopgap until we can get power generation developed or. That's a temporary solution. It's a stopgap until we can get uh, power generation uh, developed or restored or constructed. But there are solutions out there.
Okay, so the, the mitigation plan, you work with the utility to kind of grasp what we're gonna be looking at?
Yes, we talk with HECO and that and HECO is doing a tremendous job right now. Uh, in fact, our grid is probably the most secure one in the state. As far as redundancy and, and backup. Uh, HECO does an excellent job on this island with that. And we do work with them on a regular basis. In fact, I'm sure uh, you know, you know, there's a power outage right now in uh, South Kohala. And that was due to the windstorm that happened here. It's not a P, PSPS shutdown. And so HECO informs us and they're going out and addressing that situation. So we work with them on a daily basis. And we do look at what uh, their needs are and they communicate that to us, although they are a private entity. So they, they do keep a lot of things close to their vest.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perryaya.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other members? Oh, Mr. Um, before I go back to Mr. Hees, anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Perryatt. This, um, one of the recommended actions is just a needs assessment for critical infrastructure. Is this really needs assessment of what currently exists or also a needs of? What, what could be complementary to what, what may be lacking in those communities?
Uh, that needs assessment is primarily intended to focus on existing facilities and identifying. It's a basically a BARA assessment, uh, uh, best available refuge area. So determining where in a facility people can shelter, where they have the best chance of surviving an incident. And it's primarily focused on high wind events.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question on, one of the recommendations and actions was to conduct a study to determine feasibility. For an incentive-based program, but it, it's specifically for, in, against the impacts of earthquakes and tropical cyclones.
Yeah, and so this is a, a individual resident retrofit thing, uh, working with finance. About possibly getting tax breaks or incentives for people to do the retrofits to their houses. Uh, you know, we have, our houses are good for earthquakes for the most part because we have a lot of wood construction and they're, they're good. They don't do well in windstorms. Yeah, so it's, there's a paradox there.
The question I have is whether or not we should expand that because one of our higher risks as indicated by the risk ranking is wildfire. So should wildfire, you know, preventative measures, mitigation efforts on, you know, private homeowners? Could that be, uh, you know, added to this sort of feasibility study?
It, it can be and like I said, we're in the review process. It has not been accepted by FEMA yet. So if we wanted to make an addition such as that, which I think is a good addition, uh, allowing people or incentivizing people to create defensive space. Around their, their community or their, their residents.
Right.
Uh, that's one of the main things fire-wise. We work with them a lot as well. The fire department works with them as well in the communities. To make sure that people are trying to do these things and it wouldn't hurt to incentivize it.
Thank you.
I agree there.
I appreciate that because it's just trying to match with that ranking of wildfire being at one of the top.
Number one, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So then it, you know, hardening our own homes, that possibility of providing that relief there might be, might be a good outcome.
And I'll let the contractor know as soon as I get out of here. We'd like to add that.
Thank you, Mr. Perryatt. Appreciate, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Mr. Caneli E. Kleinfelter?
Something near and dear to me, as you probably know, is roads. Um, have you folks looked into how roads affect people's ability to get in and out of certain areas? When we have wildfires, volcanic activity, winds, tsunamis, and how is that being addressed?
Okay, uh, we do look into it. In fact, we got sued back in two thousand nine about connectivity and stuff. But that's neither here nor there. Uh, but we do look into it. And one of the things right now in Waikoloa Village, uh, that's one of the primary concerns. Cause that's one of the most vulnerable communities of wildland fire. I mean, they're sitting in a fire central. And we have, we, in fact, we just finished the review process for a study to be done. One on evacuation study for Waikoloa Village and then to produce a plan from that. So we're, we're tackling it based on like the highest threat communities. Uh, so that's, that's going to be an ongoing thing. But uh, right now with wild on fire being at Waikoloa Village is the first one. And I, I'd have to defer to Fire Department on which one we're gonna look at next.
Okay, uh, just, just to put it out there, uh, in, I think it was the nineties. There is a, there's a fairly large fire. We've had a few in recent, I mean, this year. Fires in Puna, which is, you know, you think abnormal because we're real wet, we're the wet side of the island, but. If there happened to be a fire in our area, and it's, it's happened before, we see drought more and more. That's not so occasionally more, more and more frequently. If something were to happen, you're dealing with a number of issues, increased density, no available water infrastructure. Poor infrastructure as far as roadways. And I, I just really don't think that we take that into account. Cause places like Waikoloa scream problem, yeah, high winds, incredibly dry, lack of roads, I mean, same issues. But in Puna, we have the same thing, just we're a little bit wetter. So I just, I would just put out to, to the administration and to you folks to take that into account when you look at. How do massive amounts of people get out on limited or zero infrastructure and what that looks like? As part of your grand plan.
And I'll take that heart because I, I, I do agree with you.
Thank you. A yield chair. Okay, any other members? Okay, if, I just have one. So I know public, once they start watching this, right? Once it gets televised, the question going to be with the national situations we're going on now, right? Funding wise, right? Cause then we, we're looking at future projects, right? With future funding, right, from FEMA. Any thoughts on that or what, how you can assure the public that we'll be okay?
Okay, uh, what I can tell you is what the Region Nine Director for FEMA told us. And that is that funding will be more scrutinized now. And the issue FEMA is having with the, a lot of the grant funds they put out there for projects. Is the money isn't utilized and it ends up coming back. And so the thought process, their thought process is why are we going to give you more money if you're not spending it? Okay, but there will be money available. Uh, it's not a scarcity, it's just going to be more scrutinized. And if we're not spending the money they've already given us, like forty-seven twenty-four, the disaster, the Lahaina wildfires, we had our own fires over here. Uh, our projects are before FEMA right now for review on whether those are going to be funded or not. And so as long, if they are funded, then it's incumbent upon us to spend that money to ensure that. We're being a good steward of the federal dollar so they'll look favorably on us in the future.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. And we thank you for coming, you know, in front of us to do your presentation.
It's my pleasure, sir.
All those in favor of approving resolution two-two-seven dash two-five and moving it to the full council, please say aye. If it was opposed, okay, we have eight ayes and one excuse, Ms. Kirkowitz. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Clerk, let's go into Bill fifty-one.
Last chance if anyone would like to testify for Bill fifty-one that didn't get a chance to yet, please speak up now. Hearing and seeing none, Bill fifty-one amends Chapter four, Article three of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand sixteen edition as amended relating to animals. Prohibits the feeding of feral or stray animals on county-owned property introduced by Councilmember Caneli Kleinfelter.
Okay, we have a motion?
Thank you, Chair. Motion to approve Bill fifty-one and for the council with a favorable recommendation.
So, a motion by Caneli Kleinfelter and second by Ms. Vegas. Vegas, Vegas, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Okay, thank you for the testimony today. I appreciate everyone who came in, opposed and unopposed. I, I do. It's good to hear everyone's support. And uh, or hate for it, and I totally understand both sides, but it's just good to hear the perspectives from each side. I like, I like having a well-rounded discussion. I believe a good way to start this is I have three cats, I have three dogs, I have thirty chickens, I have two peacocks. I have tilapia, goldfish. I love my animals. I frequented the Humane Society for my animals through adoptions. I've worked with Aloha Elio, I've worked with the Humane Society, I work with Animal Control. I listen to our county recreation folks, I listen to our parks folks, I listen to our environmental management staff. And that is the precursor for this bill. One of my cats, my favorite cat, who I call Sassy, I found on a road in HPP, she was starving. We nursed her back to health. And she is our favorite cat. She's an orange little fluff ball and I have two other cats, but Sassy is my favorite. So. I'm not an animal hater. Um, it was made, uh, you know, statements were made that, you know, this lacks compassion. I'm listening to these, these comments, but I, I think it's, it's proper to level set this bill. By saying this isn't a, I hate animals, let's convict people for feeding them bill or a starvation bill. This is a bill based on what I've seen and heard over the last six years and myself being an animal owner and lover. So with that said, the bill itself is pretty straightforward. Uh, I think everyone has heard all the testimony. And I spoke with Lauren at length over the last two or three months while this bill's floated around in different departments. Uh, I spoke to Parks and Rec about the bill and they actually uh, offered an amendment. To the council, you will find in front of you Communication two-eight-three-point-one. I'm bringing this to your attention and I, I wanna, I wanna give the council an option before I make this motion. You know, today I heard a lot of testimony. And being a logical person, I walked through the logical aspects of why I brought this bill in. I remember in high school learning about learned response and behavioral responses. And I really do feel like when we feed animals, we promote a behavior. Both on the people's side and the cat's side or the dog's side or whatever animals it may be. And that, there was some confusion today too. This isn't about just cats. This is about all animals. I see this issue across the board. But we also, by feeding, we begin to. Build a behavior in our feral animal colonies that promotes them coming to certain areas and becoming more of an issue. I'm not saying anything about trap and neuter. Program that currently exists within Parks and Recreation. What I'm saying is we begin to enable people and the cats and dogs or whoever it may be to come to a certain area. Because they've learned that response. That to me is a problem. I listen to Parks and Recreation staff talk about what they clean up every day. I listen to environmental management staff saying what they're cleaning up at our water filling stations, at our transfer facilities. And I begin to understand that we have a problem. I appreciate that this is not viewed in a nice way. But I can't logically say that we should kill the bill because it will do a negative. Cause then at that point, you're asking me to do nothing and expect things to change. I've heard that way too many times that I will not do that. So to the council, you have an amendment in front of you. That amendment would, this is from Parks and Recreation, uh, at their request and through Corporation Council, which would. Leave the trap and neuter program being run by Lauren. In place and allow it to keep happening and provide the county to authorize or contract. A person or an organization to trap, remove, impound, or seize animals. Um, as our code relate, our code allows or by the Hawaii revised statutes allowance. That would leave this program in place and it would answer a lot of the opposing testimony. Uh, a latitude chair if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Now, on the other side of that, the amendment would just, the amendment would do that. It would allow for the trap and neuter program to continue. Without the amendment, that is questionable. But I did hear two sides of the room today asking for two different things. One is to stop it completely. Which would be the bill in its current form. Two is to stop, but allow the trap and neuter and replace program to continue. Which is our other option. So I think before I make the motion to amend, I want to hear from the council on what we think as a body. And ask questions of Parks and Recreation, Animal Control.
Good.
So, and I, I just, I don't want to say a couple more things too. I, I thought, I thought about this for a while. We had caution by DLNR about our Nene population. I completely agree. We have endangered species we're trying to protect and you cannot say that cats don't have an impact on Nene. You cannot. Animal Control, their budget is more than doubled in the last few years. And we continue as a county to work with nonprofits across the board. And I know this because I've seen it come through in our nonprofit granted aid program. I've seen it in our budget. And I've heard from our own director that we continue to, and I know the organizations that continue to do that work in the community. So I can't unhear that. And I can't say that we're not helping the situation currently because we're also contracted with the folks in the yellow shirts, I believe. To do the same work that we're saying we don't do. Maybe not, but Animal, Aloha Animal Alliance or Lauren, who is she with? Okay, so they're currently working with the county to do the trap and neuter and replace a program. So are we doing something as a county? Yes. Am I looking to change it? Yes. Can we do nothing and say that we did something? No, that doesn't work. And I think we can all agree on that. So to the council members, I'm, I'd like to hear your side of it, how you feel. This is our parks, this is our transfer stations. This is our beach parks, this is everything. Each one of us is understanding of how this affects our district. And I want to hear it from you folks before you go to the amendment.
Okay, members, Mr. Houston.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, council member. Um, you alluded to some of the conversations you've had with Parks and Rec and Animal Control and DEM. So if I could actually have Parks and Rec come up first and kind of speak to other conversations and the work your staff does at, at our park spaces. Thank you, Director.
Was on, you can turn it back on. You can, you can turn them back on again. Sorry. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that. Hello, everyone. I'm Clayton Honma, Director, Parks and Recations. Um, yeah, we had conversations with uh, Councilmember Caneli Kleinfelter. Uh, in regards to this bill and we do have some of the amendments that we um, asked input to put in. But just a brief history, um, earlier I served with Mayor Billy Kinoi from two thousand nine to two thousand and. Twelve, no, two thousand and sixteen, actually. Um, and during his administration, I'll say this, that um. At Lillio Kalani Gardens, maybe we had a couple of cat colonies of about thirty to forty cats in each colony. You know, down there. Um, but today, you know, we look at what's happening down at Lillio Kalani Gardens. We got like six hundred cats in that whole peninsula down there. So you kind of see the, the, the problem has, you know, kind of. Grown over the years. Uh, when I left, was it two thousand sixteen, it was still about, you know, thirty to forty and a couple colonies. You know, in that area. Also in Kona, we also have the issue at um, Old Airport where we work with, you know, um. Um, advocates and we've allowed, you know, spaying and neutering out at Kona with advocates. And they, they do have a pretty good management program as well too, but over there, we also see the population has grown quite extensively. Over the years. Um, we've allowed Aloha Animal Alliance on this side to have spring neutering programs. At our, at our um, Butler Building near, near um, the civic auditorium, you know, to, to host it. You know, that, that, that action to it and that activity to try to keep and manage the cat populations on both sides, sides of the islands. But, you know, we got cat populations and feeders, you know, throughout the whole island as well. So um, it, it, it is an issue. Um, but again, it's not only cats, cats. We also have chickens that are out there. We have feral pigs that are out there, you know, in our parks that are tearing up our ball fields. And, you know, we, we gotta go and repair those, pick the, the, the damage that pigs do as well too. And it's just not, you know, isolated to just Hilo, that's out in Pohua, that's out in Kohala, that's out in Waimea. You know, so we do have issues everywhere as far as feeding of. You know, so we do have issues everywhere as far as feeding of animals go in our parks. And so I, you know, I strongly support, you know, this bill in, in which, um. Yeah, we, we gotta do something about the feral animals in our, in our, in our parks.
Thank you, Director, and if you could just speak a little bit to more about some of the waste cleanup that the crews have to pick up, excrement, feces, those sort of things.
Yeah, so.
From all feral animals, right, in these spaces that, and even carcasses, yeah.
Nene, absolutely, so, you know, our park caretakers not only go and mow and. Mow, mow our, our parks, but they also clean up everything as well too. And the, the, the feces and the um, the. Yeah, the defecation that, you know, the feral animals do attracts a lot of flies to the area as well too. So many of our um, patrons at our beach parks and, you know, our parks out there, they go out there to picnic. You know, they bring food, but these flies all come onto the food and the number of flies that come to our places. You know, the Lululela Gardens is a, a fine example of where, you know, by the Tsumurink, if you go and have a picnic there. It's, it's not a pleasant experience when you have to deal with, with the flies that are attracted to that area. But, you know, we, we gotta clean up those areas, we gotta keep it as clean as possible, so, you know, so it's safe for everyone, actually. Every day we pick in our excrements over there, we rake and we um, try to do our best, we cannot do anything about the defecation. But about the um, the, the hard stuff that we can go ahead and clean that up, you know, we try to do the best as we can. Um, currently at Makaiel, um, we did have the beach volleyball close up out in Honau now. And they want us to open up the beach volleyball pit at Makaiel again, but. It's unsafe for us to open up the pit because we gotta clean it up because it's been used as a big litter box over the years. And um, the sand replacement is just gonna be quite expensive to replace the sand, but. You know, at the same time, we gotta do something about the issues that we do have there to, to make it clean and. Make it a use of, usable recreational facility again, you know, to be once used by. By the kids and the kopuna and the adults who all enjoy beach volleyball on that side of the island.
Thank you, Director, appreciate your time. Do we have someone here from Environmental Management? Okay. Alright, just, I was just curious about the conditions and the, the, what the crews are doing in those spaces too. If I could have our administrator from um, Animal Control here. Thank you, Director.
Hello, everybody. Hey there, Matt Reynolds, I'm administrator for Animal Control, good to see y'all today.
Thank you, Administrator. Thanks for being here with us.
Feel like this is a marathon, huh?
Um, if you could, you know, some of the questions and some of the testimonies come up about enforcement. Could you just, could you just speak to that, um, either the constraints you have? The support you need um, for the enforcement, whether it's of abandonment. Or enforcement in some of these spaces, what, what does that look like for you? What, what do you, what do you carry out now? What can you do? What needs to be done? What support do you need?
Um, well, a lot of, a lot of the enforcement is really a manpower issue. You know, we're um, we're right now have maybe ten officers for the entire agency. And so on any given day, maybe we have one or two officers on for the entire, this entire half of the island. Um, I mean, just over this Fourth of July weekend, which was technically supposed to be our busiest weekend. I had two officers on for the, scheduled on for the, those days and they both called out six, so it um, so it was me. So it um, you know, it, it is a manpower issue. You know, if we had, if we had a little more manpower, that'd be a little bit uh, easier for us to enforce. Um, but from a standpoint of, of the numbers. You know, we cover the same amount of space and same distance and everything at the, as a police department with less. Um, you know, stations and less than one percent of what the police department uses. And so for us, the, those, those um, laws for animal abuse and animal abandonment. Um, also apply to the police department and should be applied equally. So it's, it, it, you know, I wish I could say I had more staff to be able to do it. Um, to be honest, it's just not, um, it's not functional, it's not functional what we have.
Thank you, Administrator, appreciate that. Um, there's also been some conversations about, and welcome your thoughts on this on a. You know, a lot of conversations have been about cats, but I know there's other feral animals. Um, if you could just speak specifically to a cat sanctuary idea and your thoughts on that.
I mean, you know, I know there's a lot, a lot of back and forth. There's a lot of people that have opposition to it, there's a lot of people that um, are, are wanting it. From a standpoint of our shelters, um, you know, people are calling us all, all the time. Um, for location to take their cats, they're healthy. Um, home cats that we can't, you know, from our standpoint, we don't have the space for it. We, we, as a, as a policy taken, sick and injured, feral or home cats. Um, if you'd like to ban, surrender your cat, then that's fine. But um, people that trap their cats, they're perfectly healthy, we don't take in. And so is there a, a, a need for someplace to, for those individuals to take a cat? Or a chicken or any of those? Yes. Um, and so if the, if a sanctuary serves that function. Um, and processes it, um, then yes, that's, that is a need within the county. Um, cause right now, all those animals, ultimately, yes, they do get dumped.
Thank you, Administrator. Thank you, Chair, appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you for being here. I also wanna start off, try and talk fast, thank you to all the testifiers that came. Your reputations precede you as being vigilant, passionate, and deeply dedicated. I also wanna thank those that showed up to testify in support of this bill. Because a lot of them are afraid of you, quite frankly. A lot of people won't step up, step in or speak up as it comes to the treatment. And the issues that we have with feral cats. And the times I went to the restroom and the number of just people seeing on my way to the bathroom. Each one of them is like. Well, you know, I'm born and raised here, so I have seen and heard the arguments that were made here today. About responsible capture, spay and neuter and release being a viable option. And all I have seen is our feral cat colonies increase. And yes, there will always be those that manage your colony in a more responsible way that have minimized it. Unfortunately, you're not the only ones managing cat colonies. And the fact that we even have something called a cat colony on our island is concerning. When they are an invasive species and they have done massive damage. And yes, cats are precious. I mean, all creatures are precious, but a pet cat is different than a feral cat, point blank. I have dogs, I just rescued a minor bird from the civic center at Open Space Land Committee meeting the other day. And I'm trying to figure that out. And, and I, and I would like to release that one back. My issue with the catch, spay, neuter and release is the last R. They should not be released, we should not actually have feral cat colonies on this island. Thank you to the members of DLNR who came, your scientists, your doctors, your experts in your field. You know, way more data and statistics than I do, and I know it's really hard to sit here and be that person. That um, states everything that you've studied and it's, and it's not in alignment with the passionate belief systems. Of people who have, they volunteer their time, volunteer your resources. And you're caring for the best you can in a compassionate way creatures that you come in contact with. I also wanna thank um, council member Conny Lee Kleinfelder, this took huge courage. I've talked to a number of previous council members and most will avoid anything to do with feral animals. Because it becomes such a contentious issue. I wanna point out some of the ironies. Cat colonies being fed in our county parks where there are beaches. We've already heard the damage it's done. I can't take my yellow lab dogs. To a county park that is a beach, you can't have even leashed dogs in a county beach. Cat colonies, not appropriate for there. This legislation does not call for starvation of cat colonies. It creates a requirement that if cat colonies are going to continue, they must be moved off of public property. We have fought long and hard for the advocacy and the humane. Outreach with people experiencing homelessness in our county parks. And, and there's also a number of issues related to that with feces and rubbish and whatnot. But none of those people are more important than the collective good of our community. And that's our job, is to ensure that our public spaces are safe and healthy for everyone. Predominantly, our responsibility is the humans. Next, in my mind, would be our native species. Unfortunately, invasive species aren't gonna be high up on that list. Makes me sound like a jackass, I'm okay with that today. So it's not starvation, it's not about cruelty, it's not about empathy, it's about wisdom. These cat colonies were created and propagated and perpetuated on public property. No, that never should have happened, that does fall to county. Past leadership. Also, this isn't an issue anybody ever thought about, kinda like paid parking. Who knew that then people would start feeding these cat colonies? And yes, people dump their cats at places they know there will be food. One mo- moment, Council, uh, Chair. I worked for Kona Brewing Company for years, the feeders came. It was massive amounts of food all over the place, right under the restaurant. All of a sudden, we have massive fly issues, mongoose issues, the smell issues, all the things. Once again, not everybody's an irresponsible feeder, managing a colony, but when I looked at those cats. They were not, they didn't have a tick deer, they aren't getting neutered. And no, we have done more in this council, in this term. For providing funding directly to the nonprofits that work responsibly to provide these services. It is impossible for you to provide all the animal control services needed for this island. This island is bigger than the entire state in one place. So the opportunity for propagation of invasive species is massive. But they will come to the places where they are perpetually fed. So, you know, I can support this amendment, I think that there's wisdom in this. There are organizations that are being collaborative connectors, working with county and our Parks and Rec Department. I mean, I can't get the volleyball court opened up for the kids because it's a sand pit and the feeders at, at Old Airport. It, it, it's a mess, it's a mess. No, this isn't a perfect solution, but transitioning from public spaces that are meant to serve the public. Is a wisdom I can't step away from today. So um, I also want to advise those testifying, stop using the term aloha. As if us making tough choices here is not aloha. I'm a mother, I have to make tough choices and if my daughter told me, that's not with aloha, I, I mean, come on. That's just, that's, that's proselytizing Hawaiian terminology and we don't need to be doing that here, I yield.
Ms. Kimbo?
Yeah, thank you, um, thank you, Councilmember Conny Lee Kleinfelder for bringing this forward. I think it is something that we need to have a, a wide ranging discussion on. Are you folks all familiar with, with the term wicked problem? It, it intellectually, it's the kind of problem where there isn't a clear solution, the problem is not well defined. This, most of the solutions are like one shot only, you get a chance to try it, there's no way to test the theory. Um, it's a mess, they're difficult, and this is one of those types of problems. And so I'm gonna approach this legislation from the, the four criteria that I would look at any bill. Is it needed? Is it in our jurisdiction? Is it enforceable and are there unintended consequences? Is it needed? I think it's clear. The effect on the native Hawaiian bird population, the, the effect on the month seals, the public health and safety issues. There is a, a rapid prolific, oh, I wanted to start with saying I have two cats, both of them were abandoned, we captured them, we spayed and neutered them, they're, they're ours now. Ellie and Eggroll, I didn't name them, okay, back to my argument. The, the, the need is there, obviously, and, and I, I wanna say that. I, I personally agree with, with Councilmember Vegas, like cats in beach parks are just not, uh. It's not something that belongs. Jurisdiction. The HRS requires us to deal with dangerous animals. Inhumane treatment of animals, there actually isn't anything in our HRS that requires us to manage spay or feral animals, correct?
You mean like, like just home, unhomed animals?
Correct.
Um, I mean, there's nothing specific, I mean, there are some touches, most, most laws that cover animals. Um, touch on things, but they don't necessarily well define some of it, so.
I, I think that's, this is an important note here. I would also say, there already are, according to our, my, there was mention made, we have anti abandonment laws. We do not in the county, there are at the state level though.
Um, the, it's, it's, I think if, if, if you look, it's looped into the, um, what's that? Cruel, yeah, the cruelty, the cruelty section, so it is, it is um, covered in that, just in, in a small, 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 very small snippet.
Right, so who's the enforcer on that?
It would be police or us, um, but when it becomes a felony charge, um, the police usually carry that to prosecutor's office, it's not animal control.
Right, so would that typically be enforced? From the standpoint of somebody drops off a box of kittens, is that, is that considered animal cruelty under that as a felony charge or?
It is, I mean, it, it um, some of it's hard to enforce because we don't know who the, the, um, the people are. It's the same thing with, with a lot of these locations, um, that we're talking about, you know. Unless you have a, a clear defined evidence of, you know, no one's gonna pursue it. Because there's not enough to actually take in, and even the prosecutor's office probably wouldn't pursue it to the point that it would need to be taken to court.
So I think that this bill has that same problem, if I may, in, in the sense that it's. I, I would think that this is actually unenforceable, regardless of whether or not you philosophically agree with it. If you can imagine, somebody gets notice of violation that they, they, they're feeding a stray or they're feeding a feral animal. Their argument's gonna be, I didn't know it was a stray, how do I know that this doesn't come from somebody's house, right? I mean, that, that ambiguity alone, I think, is making it unenforceable. The, the amendment that she proposed, which I shouldn't talk about yet, the, about feeding, like what is actual feeding? Oh, I just dropped it, right, I mean. There's a, there's an issue here about enforceability that I think we need to seriously discuss. It might be better to enforceability wise to deal with abandonment than it is with feeding. I just wanna put that out there as a suggestion. Finally, unintended consequences, it was mentioned a couple of times. That if you were to prohibit feeding. Then the, the feeding community would go somewhere else, and I've actually seen this. So there've been areas where there has been enforcement from the state side around feeding. And that led to folks going into the woods in a nearby area and setting up their feeding stations there. So that's, that's one of the concerns that I have is that this wouldn't actually solve the problem because of. People going to other areas to, to engage in feeding. I will also say that these, and it's been mentioned, these are resourceful creatures. Um, I remember canvassing in a way back of the woods neighborhood of my district where there was no people around. Abandoned house, there were hundreds of cats in this colony, I can swear, I swear to God, some of them had like three eyes and extra toes. They all looked like uh, Siamese, so there was obviously some inbreeding there, but, I mean, these guys will feed themselves. Anywhere they end up, and so. Just to your, your initial question about the amendment, um, and I think this bears further conversation. We do have a pilot program that we've been trying to get everybody behind that is, is it a workable solution? I don't know, we won't know until we try it. It is trap, neuter, release and manage, and the specific objective is to actually get to zero. So we don't get there immediately, the only way we do that is if we were able to capture all the cats, put them in airplane, ship them somewhere they, where they wanted them. But I, I, I agree with you, we have to do something, like we have to do something. So I would like the opportunity to see if that pilot program is successful and get some of the data that we collect from it. I don't, again, you know, I, there are issues, there are issues with everything because this is a wicked problem. But I do request that we, we have that dialogue about that opportunity. Um, I'll leave it there for now, thank you, Chair. Um, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other members, Ms. Kagiwara?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, so I've been supporting the um pilot project with Councilmember Kimball. Um, the and thank you, Councilmember uh Conny Lee Kleinfelder. I do think we have to do something. Doing nothing is no longer an issue. Um, I am concerned with the way the bill is written with not being amended. And I also have an amendment that I'm proposing that I think could possibly um go well with your amendment or um be consolidated with your amendment. Um, but my, I guess there's a couple of things. One, I, we have been putting a lot of money into this, but it's been such a scattershot approach. It's like I do a CRF for this organization and, you know, uh Michelle does a CRF for another organization. It's not coordinated. Um, we give some money for animal control and they can do this one thing. But then the rest of the island doesn't, you know, get attended to, and so that just, you know, grows. It's just been really um not uh coordinated. And so I think really thinking about data-driven best practices is what we need to focus. I know we don't have a perfect solution, um, but I'm willing to, you know, go forward with something like this with amendments because I think it brings a lot of um attention to the issue. I would even wonder if we could do something with um the cat. My my vision is to move cat feeders into a cat manager and caretaker mode so that we don't have people who are just putting out food and walking away and the nanny are getting it, or, you know, the rats are getting it, or, you know, all these other horrible things are happening. But we have trained people who have a set of guidelines they've agreed to follow. Um, they, these are based on best practices and we and we give that a real shot. Um, I could see even doing what I'm concerned, like a traffic school model. Like if somebody gets a ticket, they could not have to pay the fine if they go to a training and get it signed off on um and agree that they will follow best practices and not do the practices that we know are harmful um to our environment and to even to the cats themselves. I also think that, you know, we have, this isn't just about cats. I've got serious pig problems in my district where people are feeding pigs. And um, you know, that's a huge issue. And so I would love, you know, for us to be able to make sure those people can't just feed the pigs. But if we also have the project happening in Puna that R and D has been supporting to and part of that is feeding the pigs to trap them. Um, and I think cat management involve can involve feeding. Um, but in a really specific best practice way, not in a scattershot way. So um, I'm hoping that if we proceed with this, that we can amend it. Um, and I can get to that when we um go there. I did wanna mention, I mean, there's some pretty bad practices happening out there. Um, even at our helo transfer station, my understanding is that we have hundreds of pigs eating garbage at our helo transfer station. That is a disaster waiting to happen. I mean, um, what's it called, burselosis? Is that the right name of it? Yeah. That that is a disease like really harmful for people and um is often spread when pigs eat um things from humans that is not intended. So, you know, we have some major, major animal feeding issues on this island, so I do really appreciate this. Um, but I also feel like there's no way we can enforce it as written. And we have an amazing group of people here that want to be volunteers that if we work with them, we can um get on a path to doing something. We don't have the personnel. We don't have the personnel at animal control, at parks, at our police department to do, to make a major impact by writing tickets for fines. We need the community to come into this and really work with us. So I'm gonna wait until since your um amendment is first. Um, and my amendment is uh numbered after that, but I would love to discuss uh the possibilities of amending. Thank you, Ayil.
Anyone else who didn't speak yet?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Conny Lee Kleinfelder. I think the the bill here, um having listened to the testimony, is reasonable. Um, when we're talking about just public, Arkansas County uh property, there are other areas and if um there are these opportunities to feed in a restricted area that is gonna ensure uh the safety not only of the cats but all of the other uh animals that have been brought up today and most especially our community, human community. Uh, I think that's the direction we can head in. Um, there might be some opportunity perhaps to give a little bit of time um for this transition. But I do support and I uh I think the points brought up by Councilmember Vegas are are well-taken. Uh, especially from what I hear in my own community with regards to some of the, you know, the few parks we have uh on the west side and and the significant issues we're facing, um primarily with the feeding of cats and mongoose. Um, and I think the intention is cats, but the mongoose are eating too. So, uh, thank you again for bringing this bill forward and I hope we can get it to uh, get it to the finish line in a way that, you know, acknowledges the work that is done by community who's come out today to share um their manoa as well. Thank you.
Ms. Kalimba?
Briefly, I don't have any cats and I don't particularly like cats that much, but, I mean, you know, they're all right. Um. But, yeah, um. But I do think, I do want us to have the amendments. I think it is important to at least try these T and R um efforts. I I think the management part is really important so that the numbers are reduced um without just sort of you know, just abandoning what's going on. So professionalizing the cat feeding um that's going on, I guess, is sort of the idea. Um, and also, you know, it is really place-specific. So I think there's places that have been pointed out where having a cat colony is just not, not a good place. But there might be other places where it's not as damaging. So I think down, as we go forward, perhaps figuring out ways to look at that sort of geographic um element, but I don't think it can be really written into our um code. So I think it's gonna have to be on a a different level. That's all.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I just wanna make a comment. Okay, so in front of us is basically having county properties not being allowed to feed feral animals, okay? State, I think, has kinda like the same like wordings and or like enforcement of law, right, kind of, yes. So basically, to me, we as a body, that's what we here for. It's about what the county, right? The issues with the county. So with the feeding of other places, it's up to I guess, the feeders or whoever to find another area that is not either, that isn't government land that they can feed and get these, you know, to help those feral animals. So just wanted to kinda let everybody know that this this is what in front of us is basically what the county, okay? So, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I did wanna, thank you for making those points, uh to to the council. Sorry, busy, busy day. Thank you for your points, each one of our council members, um and well-taken. Um, and I'm hearing the want to bring up the amendment and I appreciate that, Ms. Kagiwara. I think uh your amendment and mine are on the same track. My amendment was actually uh really on behalf of Parks and Recreation and Corporation Council and trying to really clarify what the intention was and make, kinda find that middle ground. I did want to give a moment, if you're still online, Mister Work?
Yes, I'm still here.
Wonderful. I I appreciate you being with us. You are here on behalf of?
Uh, myself.
Okay, and then do you have anything to add to the conversation today, just from what you've heard and that you stayed on with us for a few hours now?
Um, nope. If people have questions about wildlife or the impacts of cats on wildlife, I'm happy to answer them. But I'm uh not in a position to give any testimony.
Okay, understood. Okay, well, thank you for being with us. To the council, um, so it was mentioned that we have lawsuits possibly pending in two other counties. We may be next. We have state and federal agencies attending the meeting today. The amendment that I brought forward, I will bring in at this point, which provides the ability for the community to understand that we're hearing you, we're listening, but also to make sure that we're making forward movement. Uh, so with that, Chair, motion to amend Bill fifty-one with the contents of Communication two eighty-three point one.
Motion by Ms. Conny Lee Kleinfelder and second by. One of those.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, on the on the um amendment.
Okay, thank you. So um sub subsection A, uh minor amendment to lease rented manager operated by the county. Uh, description of what it means to feed. Um, I find that pretty common sense as far as the term, but I like that we've clarified exactly what that means. Um, and then a description of feral uh as well as there nothing in this section prohibits, restricts or limits the ability of the county or of a person authorized or contracted by the county to trap, remove, impound or seize an animal or to undertake any other power or duty under this chapter or HRS, chapters one forty-two or one forty-three. That provides the mechanism by which the existing programs can continue to operate with an agreement between them and Parks and Recreation. That's the purpose of the amendment. It's very straightforward. Everything else that is in Bill fifty-one stays in place. Um, and then just as a minor sub-note, uh LRB let me know that there is a slight wording issue with the use of of in the last sentence in section D, that should be or, and we can do a verbal change on that if we need to, as as we've done in the past, correct?
We prefer things in writing as much as possible, um, and I think we'll have another chance, you know, as this moves forward to to really clean that up on a written form.
Thank you, Mister Clark.
Thank you.
Okay, uh so that's the intention of the amendment. It is pretty clear. It's pretty straightforward in alignment with, I think, both sides of what I heard today. For the most part, maybe not making everybody perfectly happy, but it is a middle ground. Okay.
Chair.
You? You?
Ayil.
Okay. Your mic. Okay. Ms. Kagiwara?
Thank you, Chair. Um, good with A. I think that's a really good clarification. C also good. A, B and C, I I don't have a problem with. Um, D, the only thing I'm feeling like is that there's nothing in there about management. And I feel like that's something that I'd really like to see in this because data-driven management that is well-coordinated on our island, I think, is what's gonna separate what we're already doing from what we could be doing. And so that piece I would I would love to see. And and like I said, I I feel like um when we get to my amendment, we can talk about it, but that we could possibly meld the two and maybe that would take care of it. Um. Yeah, okay, I yield.
Any others? On the ma- Ms. Kimball?
Yeah, um. Appreciate the the clarification on A. I do think the language on C presents a problem. And again, I'm coming at this from the lens of enforceability. And I mean, a a law is gonna be not useful if it's not possible to enforce. And I think that from the legalese standpoint, there's enough ambiguity to the language around this definition of feed. I mean, I I I the more language that's put in here, the more opportunities there are to say, I wasn't doing that when you're trying to go ahead and get enforcement. And so, um, that has been the problem with the abandonment issue is it's so difficult to enforce. And I think this the simpler and more the the reduction of language, actually, it just, everybody knows what feeds mean. But if you don't, what people are gonna use is if I it doesn't spell the letter of this clause here, then they're gonna be able to come up with a way of saying I wasn't doing that, and you have an enforcement problem.
Okay, on the amendment, anyone else? You're seeing that, okay? All those in favor of amending Bill fifty-one with the Communication of two eight three point one, say aye. Those opposed? Oh, who said name? Oh, Ms. Kimball. We have seven ayes. If you don't mind, Mister Chair, I'll do a roll call vote, just so it can be clear as our rules dictate. So the on the on the motion to amend Bill fifty-one with the contents of Communication two eight three point one, Ms. Kalimba.
Aye.
Mister Houston.
Aye.
Mister Inaba.
Aye.
Ms. Kagiwara.
Aye.
Mister Conny Lee Kleinfelder. Ms. Kirkowitz. Ms. Kimball. Ms. Vegas. Chair Nishi.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in favor with one no, uh Ms. Kimball and one absent, Ms. Kirkowitz. So Bill fifty-one is amended with Communication two eight three point one. On.
Chair.
Ms. Kagiwara?
Thank you. I'd like to amend the bill with the Communication two eight three point two.
Motion by Ms. Kagiwara, second by Chair Inaba. Go ahead, Ms. Kagiwara.
Thank you so much. Um, once again, this is just really getting to the issue of animal management. I've amended um sect- section four dash three blank A um to include a person may not feed or attempt to feed a stray or feral animal on property owned by the county. And I've added, unless feeding is part of an animal management program, which has been authorized by the county. Um, and then the additional piece, instead of the order taking effect upon its approval, is that this wouldn't take effect until January first, twenty twenty-six, to give us time to um have the guidelines and trainings in place so that people understand um, the data-driven animal management uh ways that we we expect them to be operating under and to be um connected with a animal management program that is authorized by the county. Um, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Happy to take questions.
On the amendment? Mister Conny Lee Kleinfelder?
Uh, I like the animal management program piece. I I feel like this is redundant, but you didn't know what I was bringing and I didn't know what you were bringing. So I I feel like if you wanted to work with the animal management program, although again redundant because we're we're offering that in the previous amendment, you know, or of a person authorized or contracted by the county to do the following, which is basically describing an animal management program. But I like what you're saying about having some requirements we're moving towards and what that animal management program is doing. Is what I, what I'm hesitant to say is, where's the data that shows we're reducing the number of animals when we're doing these programs? And that that I would love to see that component tied into this, that if we're gonna run a program, it should be into reducing the numbers. And if we're not seeing a reduction, then what are we doing? So I I like the, I like that portion of it, maybe finding another way to incorporate that in. I am a little bit hesitant to push it out to January. But I understand why you're doing that and why that would be good for the community to give us time to work through what it's gonna take, put up signage and do X, Y and Z for the community, so. Work through what it's gonna take, put up signage and do X, Y, and Z for the community, so. Thank you.
Okay, any other members? If, Miss Kagiwara?
Yeah, thank you, um, just to, to go back with that, um. I, I don't think we know for sure what's gonna work, and that's why we're doing the pilot project, um, you know, one of the main. Parts of the pilot project is to show that we can move cat colonies away from sensitive areas. Um, in a way that is, um, will, will, will keep them away. And that is a huge part of this pilot project, and if we don't. Um, focus on animal management programs and try something like this. I feel like we're gonna be like, you know, civs, just like, you know, how will we keep. Animals from just going back there, it's, you know, it will just be really hard to, um. See where we can make a difference, um, I did wanna just share, cause I was able to meet with a international. Folks who are here from Meow, Matrix, who've been doing this work in other places all over the. World, including, uh, in La Reunion, which is our sister city, um, where they've had a lot of success. Um, one of the things I learned that I didn't really understand before I met with them, is that managed cat populations. On the periphery of an area that you want to keep cats out of. Can actually act as guards against other cats going into that area. They're very, um, territorial, and if you keep an, um. Partial cat colony, um, on the periphery of an area you don't want other cats to go in. They can actually help you keep cats out of that area, which I thought was fascinating, um, so. I'd really like to see us try coordinated animal management and not. I, I worry that if we don't put that in, that we're still gonna continue with our kind of scattershot approach. And, um, I do wanna make sure that we are, um, looking at, you know, where we've got one pilot that we wanna try, and if it works. Then we definitely wanna work getting cats out of our beach parks, I mean, that's a hundred percent. Um, I think where we wanna go with some of this, but without that management piece, I, I worry, and, and. You know, if we start this, you know, in a coup- in a month or something. Once it's passed without having the ramp up, I, I just feel like we also lose the cooperation and trust with the community. That could be really valuable on making this potentially successful, so I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Any other members, if not, I'm gonna talk about this amendment, can I get? P R and Animal Control, if you guys can come up, please, I have a question. So have you folks seen this Communication two eight, two eight three point two? The communication. And in section eight, I mean, oh, A, sorry. Yes, so it's saying authorized by the county, so now is it gonna be animal control? Or it's gonna be Parks and Rec, but hearing from Parks and Rec is like, you folks don't want it in the. Properties, right?
Absolutely.
So can I have your, your comments on this, on this?
Well, one of the things about feeding, you know, animals on our property, it, it encourages, um. The abandonment of animals into our property, because they, they feel safe, that it's gonna get fed. So I, I believe the numbers have exploded because of that fact in, in itself, I mean, we do the spay and neutering, which is. Great, you know, we try to manage the populations in that way, understand about, um. Trying to migrate the, um, the feeding stations out of our properties, and that, that is also a great, 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 um. Option as well too, but on that, um, trap, spay, neuter, and it's not release, but it's return. On, on what, what people are, what, what the program is about, the return is the, the challenge that I had, just the council member Vegas just said. The R is the one that is, that is a big concern to us, and so that will bring, you know, the, the, the. The animals back into our places, but again, it's gonna continue to, and keep the numbers there. Until they, they, they are, um, until they disappear with attrition or whatever, and, um. However, the number's gonna keep continuing to grow, because people are gonna continue to say this is a safe place. To abandon our animals, you know, at the parks, um, so I, I am not in agreement with feeding of, of. Of animals in our parks to begin with, you know, and that's, and enforcement is something else, we don't, we cannot enforce. Any of them, although we can put up the signages for the enforcement officials to come in and enforce that. Their rules, that's all that we have, we don't have anything else to manage or monitor, you know, those activities at our parks.
Yeah, um, I mean, from our perspective, as far as the, um, the people that would be managing this, the program. Um, they would have to manage those feeders as well, and make sure that the people that are feeding are the authorized feeders.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, and then so, by having it authorized by the county, so animal control doesn't wanna do it, right?
We don't have the manpower to sit down there and, and monitor it all the time, of course, that, that's, that's a given. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, it, it, that would be the question of who manages that, that group.
Or who approves, authorizes.
Yeah.
Right, them to do it.
To do it, yeah.
Yeah, and Parks and Rec, you don't, I don't think you folks wanna do that.
Sure. If I may, the intention of this.
Excuse me, excuse me, okay, I'm gonna get to you, okay, so I just wanted to get them on record first. And then, um, my question is to you, when you put down authorized by the county, who's the county?
May I answer?
Yeah, cool.
Okay, um, the, the intention is that, um, with our departments, we will make the guidelines and the. Um, kind of the data-driven assessment on what the animal management would look like. And then the community partners will have to abide by those guidelines. If they want to be animal caretaker management, if they don't. Then they would go under this where they would be, um, possibly fined for feeding. Because they wouldn't be following the guidelines put in place.
So my question to you is, so which county agency would be the per- the agency that would authorize?
The guidelines?
The animal management.
It would be animal control, I would think, working, but working with, you know, we wanna work with.
But then, we're just hearing right now, they don't really want it, they don't wanna take the responsibility. And you cannot force it to them.
I mean, I could see, I could see it managed under a contract, um, situation with a, with an organization such as Illahai Animal Alliance, or something like that. You know, we, 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 we've, we've been talking about cats being the biggest issue, and, you know, and it is pigs, it is, it is chickens. You know, and, you know, one thing that, you know, we've talked about toxic plasmosis as being one of the major things that, that cats bring, but. Um, brucellosis, pseudorabies, which is on the rise in Pohowa, um, you know. There's the bird flu, which is a constant issue coming from the mainland, these are all things that, um, having. Animals in proximity to people, um, create a scenario that you, you just don't really want, and, and especially in public parks. But, um, I, I do see an avenue that we, we do need to find a way to get those animals out. Of those areas, sensitive areas, um, you know, and if, if the amendment is, is what will bring that avenue to, to allow that. Then that's, that's one option, you know, that's, so, you know, it, from, from our animal control perspective, I think it would have to be a contracted. Company to manage those, those groups, and make sure that, yes, the authorized people are doing it. Not, non-authorized people would have to be brought into the fold to make sure that they're doing things properly as well.
So you're seeing that it's not the county's responsibility, that could authorize.
Authorize a group to do it, yeah.
Right, it, it won't, it won't be.
It, it would, it would have to be that the county authorizes a group to do it, fund them, and, and yes.
To oversee.
To oversee that.
The management.
Yep.
So you, your depo- your agency would do that.
Would, would, would help work with the group, um, we, we, we are and we have been working with groups, um, to, to manage some of that. Same as we do with working with a lot of our partner organizations to, to fund the spay and neuters and things like that around, around the county.
And then you would need funding for that.
That, that, that would be, yes.
Cause you're gonna have to pay this nonprofit to manage, right, unless you've been doing it for free.
Yeah.
Correct?
It would have to be a county managed contract.
So that's another cost, okay, and then, but the, but the bottom line is, we're here today to try and get it out of. The county parks and par- properties, right, and so if you, if you, if you, um, I guess. S- support this, then we're kinda going back and giving them permission to go into certain areas.
Yes, I, I, I mean, I, I, I see that there's, there's a dichotomy to the, the, the subject matter here that we're talking about, that. And there has to be a little bit of give and take, and, you know, I, I'm with, um, Parks and Rec in that. Um, having the, those animals and those, um, species in the areas with children and families playing. Is not an ideal situation, but there has to be a way out, you know, there are animal, the animal numbers are off the charts. And no, um, single thing is going to, no single bullet is going to solve the problem. And if this is just one of the many bullets in the, in the, in the chamber, then it's, it's one of the options that we have, and, um, it's a tool. You know, to, to help guide us and help us, um, manage that program if possible.
Okay, I'm gonna, you, just really, I guess.
Yeah, I, um, I think you guys just kinda summed up, a- and I appreciate you're definitely listening to the constituents in. In this, uh, putting together. This potential amendment, but once again, I have to go back to. I don't think where we wanna be heading is managing feral cat colonies in our public parks. And I know how long it's taken for us to even get to have this conversation at council, somebody being courageous enough. To endure this, um, but that's not where we wanna go, and that's not what I wanna encourage, because that is the pretense that. What's been happening for decades now has been happening under, um, so I would prefer the. Prior amendment, as we've already passed it, because it talks about removing. And impounding, and to me, that goes back to capture, spay and neuter, and then home. Or find another facility, or private property, or something else. And another, and another means to facilitate that, and I, I appreciate, um. While I can appreciate Councilmember, um, Kimball's, you know, high sensitivity to the terminology here. I also look at our Parks and Rec people, and I know our community policing really well, and so. You know, they're gonna be warning people, and word's gonna get out in the community really fast. About the prohibition of feeding animals within our county parks. That word will spread very quickly, so the, the concept of I don't know, or I'm not feeding, or whatnot. And this is where it comes down to community and personal conscience, and recognizing where we're trying to get to. Actually, what we're trying to return to as an island, not invaded by. Um, species that do more harm than good here, and so, um, I'll continue to support this legislation. I have faith in our county departments, I can't support a resolution or an amendment with a new management program. Cause once again, who's gonna manage it, how are they gonna manage it? No, I mean, they're already managing relationships with the responsible and with this test pilot project, and so. We just. It would just overly complicates things, and, and it lose sight of the point, which is feral cat colonies are causing catastrophic. Devastation to, um, to native species and potentially. Impacting the health and welfare of our communities in public spaces, taxpayer public spaces. And we have the full support of the state and the DLNR as a county for taking this initiative, which goes a long way. Cause most times we're sitting here saying, how do we get more support from the DLNR, and you guys are, you know, underfunded and understaffed and whatnot. So thank you for spending your day here with us in these challenging conversations, I yield.
Uh, thank you, to, to the maker, if, if you'd be willing to. Withdraw the communication to amend, take a look at what we just passed in the previous amendment. And maybe sit down with Parks and Recreation and see, see what. Programs would be allowable that's already been included because of the amendment that we just passed, and see if that takes. See if that takes care of amending section A and the animal management programs, I think, I think that you may find that it, it may. I am open to doing a later enactment of, we pass it and it goes into effect two, three months later, that makes sense. Cause that gives them time to put up signage for the police department to understand their responsibility, animal controls responsibility, Parks and Rec, D E M. Whoever, cause there's gonna be some implementation issues, that, that part I like, you built in that component, but the. I think we're being redundant with section A and what we passed in section D just a few minutes ago. That's my suggestion, it's up to you how you wanna proceed, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion, I'm willing to, to look at that, I do wanna just, um, ask these two gentlemen here. Um, Administrator, um. Do you think that we will reduce the cat population on our island? By what we've passed and amended today with no management involved, um, with basically fining people for feeding?
I mean, I don't think that, um, that this is going to solve the problem of the cats.
You think it will even reduce the population?
I mean, the, the, the populations will move elsewhere, um, you know, cats are pretty resourceful, cats are, um, you know. They, they find food when they need to, um, you know, and so it, it, those populations will migrate. And cats by themselves have a very large range, so, you know, it, um, you know, I don't think it'll. It'll solve the problem of the county, I think it'll solve, you know, it might solve the problems on the county property that, which, which is, I think. Um, what, what, what it's all about, you know, with, with this, but the problem is that those colonies right now are, are on those properties. And so, um, you know, I, I think that, that it won't solve the problem, but I do think that there needs to be. You know, we, we need to figure out a, a method of, of removing those animals, cause even when, even if we do pass this today, I don't think it'll. And, and people stop feeding today, the cats aren't gonna go away, they'll be there for a while.
Okay, thank you, and, um, Parks Director, you, you did mention earlier that you thought it was important to move. The cat colonies out of our parks, um, and I'm just wondering. How do we do that if we don't do any cat management and, and thoughtful, like actually moving them out?
Well, speaking about the program that, you know, you're involved in and migrating the, the cat feeding stations out of our parks. But again, you know, if you look at the dogs in our beach parks laws and stuff like that, and we're allowing cats, you know, to be fed at our parks. It, 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 it's, it doesn't make much sense, right, I mean, the reasons why we're not allowing the dogs in the beach parks is because of the. Feces and the defecation that happens in there, and yet we have stray cats and feral cats in our beach parks. Chickens as well too, and pigeons, you know, all doing, you know, the, the same thing, and so, um. You know, I agree a hundred percent with what, uh, Matt just said, in saying that, you know, we, we're not gonna reduce the numbers. But we gotta also think about reducing them or getting out of our beach parks, and not encouraging. Uh, others to continue to abandon their pits in our properties and at our parks. You know, cause the numbers have just grown over the years, you know.
Okay, well, I'm happy to, um, work with you guys, I do think it's really important that we, we. That we give people time, some time, this can't, if it goes into effect right away, I think we're in. We're shooting ourselves in the foot and. And I, I will look at the language, um, but I think, you know, making sure that we can manage. That we, we pay attention to, you know, management and not just saying no. Because I just don't think it's gonna work if we just do that, we don't, I mean, who's gonna give these tickets? Who's, we just said, you don't have the people power to give the ticket, so how is that gonna stop people if we don't giving tickets? We're just putting another county policy into our code that we do not enforce. And that sends the wrong message, I think, so, um, okay, I yield, um, I'll, I'll withdraw at this point. Um, I'll withdraw communication two eight three point two.
Okay, so now we're back to the main motion, which was amended by two eight three point one, right?
Uh, thank you for the conversation, just, just to touch on something I think is important. Uh, the amendment that we passed allows the county, Parks and Rec, Animal Control, to work with any organization or person. To continue any program that's existing or non-existing right now, or a future program that comes up, it's allowable, but it's at your discretion.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, so just, just putting that out there, so it's not that any programs will stop, it will be up to the director or the administration or whomever. In deciding how we proceed and with what intention, that, that really gives you folks the direction. Or the department in charge, the direction, how they wanna see a program working within the county work. Uh, so to the council members, thank you very much for your patience and walking through this to the community, thank you very much for listening and for participating, it's important. Uh, I'm going to proceed with moving this forward to council today, I feel like we're in a good place. We've made amendments that satisfied both sides, and to the extent possible, nothing's perfect.
Okay, um, Ms. Kimball, last one, so, yeah, no, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on council member Connelly Kleinfelder's, um, question, because just to be clear, the, the pilot program that was mentioned earlier. With Aloha Animal Alliance actually isn't happening yet, it's still in the pending process and determining metrics and things like that. As you understand it, this, the program being proposed, is that covered under this amendment? Just to clarify specifically, it's not about continuing existing programs, but that program, it's in the planning process.
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, I mean, that, that's, that's what I'm coming and understand, yes.
Okay, just, just making sure.
Yeah.
Work, correct, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, so let's do a roll call on approving Bill fifty-one that is amended with communication two eight three point one.
On the motion to move Bill fifty-one to council with a favorable recommended, favorable recommendation, Ms. Kalimba.
Aye.
Mr. Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Inaba.
Aye.
Ms. Kagiwara.
No.
Mr. Connelly Kleinfelder. Ms. Kirkowitz, Ms. Kimball.
Aye.
Ms. Vegas.
Aye.
Chair Nishi.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in favor, Ms. K- Kagiwara voting no, and one absent, Ms. Kirkowitz.
Okay, motion's carried, and it is now at five oh five, and this can be adjourned, thank you.
We'll be starting the next committee in about ten minutes, we need a little time to transition.
Thank you, Chair.